Good morning. Today we welcome you to today's meeting of the Board of Commissioners. First thing on our agenda today is the approval of our agenda.
Move for approval.
Second.
We got a motion to approve our agenda. A second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any citizens to be heard that there are items that are not on the agenda? Anybody on the computer?
Nothing, Mr. Chair.
Okay, we'll move on to approval of payments of bills and vouchers.
I would move re-approve.
Second.
We got a motion to second to pay the bills and vouchers. All in favor?
Aye.
Approval of minutes for September the 5th. And I think we can take the workgroup minutes for September the 5th also.
I'll offer the approval of the minutes and workgroup minutes.
Second.
We got a motion to second to approve the minutes from September the 5th and the workgroup minutes from September the 5th. Any discussion of those? All in favor?
Aye.
With that, we'll move into our second agenda item. Request approval to rehire an open juvenile detention worker position. James, you're gonna take that one?
Morning, Mr. Chair, members of the board. I'm here today to request permission to rehire an open position that we have in our secure unit. It is currently in our 2023 budget. The person's relatively new, has been here less than a year, so there won't be much of a savings between a new hire and what that individual's making for salary right now.
Move for approval.
Second.
We got a motion to second to approve the rehiring of a juvenile detention worker Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Next thing, we got Dara Lee, request approval of Clay County HRA to levy and collect the special benefit tax for 2024.
Good morning, Chair. Members of the commission. I'm just here to ask, to answer any questions that you may have, since you've probably heard from me enough for the last couple of months. We are requesting approval of the special benefit tax that our board has levied in the amount of $500,000, with the understanding that our board will reduce that amount contingent upon our successful application for the local aid for affordable housing from the, from Clay County as well as the city of Moorhead. City staff has indicated they will forward a recommendation to the Moorhead City Council for the $85,000, and then they will also be issuing an RFP. They are unsure of that timeline, but that we would then submit an application under their RFP as well.
Under this resolution, would we be then stuck if they don't approve it? Do we get stuck with it then?
No, sir. We, you know, as you are aware, the maximum levies must be approved by the end of September, but it would be up to this commission if you so choose to reduce that prior to the end of the year.
Any other questions?
Can you explain the RFP when it comes to Moorhead?
I don't know if I can, Commissioner, in that they are in the process of developing that, and they just want it, as this commission has discussed at its workgroup, to be an equitable process. But they do understand that within our levy request, there is the $85,000 specifically for the city of Moorhead, and so staff felt it was appropriate before the RFP was issued, is my understanding, to go forward with that recommendation.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Chair, I have a question that goes back to some of your previous discussions here, and, you know, we were talking about a lot of the people that get into this housing, they're capped at 30%, right?
That is correct.
Do we, is there anything, or do homeowners who are, for example, on fixed income, do they have some of those same opportunities if they're, say, for example, their mortgage and property taxes end up being more than 30%? Do they have the same, do they have the same opportunities to get assistance?
We do have a voucher, Housing Trace Voucher Home Ownership Program. Typically, that is for newer homeowners who have participated in our voucher program. And then, I'm no expert on there, but I know that there are property tax reductions for those who are elderly or disabled within the state of Minnesota. And then, what we do with our funds is part of those rehabilitation funds requested in the levy, we can do rehabilitation for owners whose income is under 80% of area median income outside of the city of Moorhead, and then I believe it's 50% of area median income through a statewide program with throughout Clay County. The city of Moorhead also has specific funds for rehabilitation for others under 80%.
Yes, I'm not, I'm not talking about, I'm just talking about actual costs or, you know, people who are on fixed income when, when the inflation kicks in that, you know, for example, I had a mortgage that one time was $600, and now it's $944, you know, and that's, you know, for me, that's, it's not, but I'm, for the people that, out there who are on fixed incomes, when, when we start adding on all these taxes, you know, to me, these are regressive taxes.
I completely understand that property taxes are regressive taxes typically, but the data for Clay County's shows a significantly higher proportion of renters of all ages, including seniors, are more cost burdened than homeowners. It is at least double, and I wish I had that data right in front of me, I could send you that. The 2023 data just came out, but there is a significant difference within Clay County.
I don't disagree with you, but I, I happen to know that in my district, I have an awful lot of people who were on fixed incomes, seniors who are on fixed incomes, who are trying to stay in their homes. That's the point I'm trying to make.
Any motions or questions?
Well, I'll start. I'll make a motion to approve the Clay County HRA request, and, and collect a special benefit tax for 2024.
This would be for Resolution Number 6-20-23-1?
That is correct.
There a second on that one?
A second, and I'd like to comment. I'm, I'm not new to the board. I am, I was very surprised in your presentation that the HRA now includes the city of Moorhead's former housing. I don't think we were made aware of that. I've talked to at least one other commissioner, and that's kind of a surprise to all of us. I hope we're gonna be able to bring this down, and when funding is contingent on another elected body's vote, it's a difficult thing to call here. I seconded the motion because the services that the HRA provides and the people it serves directly, it's critical. And we're in a position right now to where housing needs are, it's important they be met and that we address affordable housing for the people in this community. But as Commissioner Campbell put it, I don't think any of us here take the levy for granted and the impact it has on people. And as you see in other communities here in our region, they're experiencing the same thing, so we are gonna be very scrupulous in our stewardship of what that property tax is, and I hope that we'll be able to come back and reduce or even eliminate this additional millage on our taxpayers before the final times come in. I would request that you be very mindful of that and that that needs to be reduced. But for the time being, I don't want to hamstring the operation of something that serves people who have pretty profound needs.
Steve, would this change our levy at all if we approved this?
Mr. Chair, Commissioners, no, this is a separate, this is outside of, it'll be shown on there.
Well, that's why this is separate. With the water district, yes. Go ahead.
Yeah. I appreciate your comments, Commissioner Abinger. I totally agree, and I too see this important, important need, but we, you know, in this motion, we have that opportunity for that reduction, and I think we need to let things play out, and then we'll just have that hard decision to make as we move along with each other before our final budget.
Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Dara, thanks for the presentation, and I know you've attended a couple other meetings, and both Commissioner Campbell and I have worked with Steve to, to see how we can allocate funds to address the needs that you're seeing. So agreed, there are incredibly profound needs countywide in all areas, and as I said last week on another issue, we do our best to address those needs in the most fair and equitable way possible. I think we've provided comments based on, on timing, and this is a large, large ask, and I cannot reiterate enough how particularly now with the merge with the Moorhead component, it might be in our best interest to have, I know, I'm not volunteering anyone, or myself, or whoever, I don't care, but for additional meetings, but this particularly is, is something that we should have representatives from the city of Moorhead and ourselves part of a dialogue. This is outside of, of your own commission or board, just to make sure that each understands that we're all doing our best, and we are willing to come to the table with additional funds that were allocated through the other process, and we understand that, but making sure that we're partners with all of our cities. I know you had been to the city of Barnesville as well as the city of Moorhead, and I know there were other comments maybe about whose job in it is it and who's taking more and whatever, and the reality is, this ask will go to all Clay County landowners, and it doesn't matter what city they're in, it'll go to all, all landowners. So where I particularly struggle just with the, we'll approve this if this comes in and if they do this, and I don't want to jeopardize what those grants are, because I really do feel each dollar that is allocated to the HRA really comes in, in a multitude of different ways, tenfold sometimes. But just, if you're hearing the comments, it's probably because we want to help be part of the process and the dialogue of, of how we get to this point, knowing that an item later on in this agenda asks for a substantial amount as well. So I, I don't want to be someone who is reducing what you're asking for, but I will say that I won't support the full ask in December. Because I know there are additional funds that are available and are, are able to bring that ask down, and it's in no way a show of my support for the needs. Your partnership with Lakes and Prairies is enormous, and being on that board, I see that, and that service, that homework starts at home, is enormous. So thank you for those programs.
Chair Gross, may I just clarify a couple of points? We are not merged with the Moorhead Public Housing Agency. We are managing it under a shared management agreement at this time, and so the amounts in the levy are not specifically targeted at any Moorhead Public Housing Agency projects at this time. And then, and I did not know the second component until very recently, but the appropriation for the statewide affordable housing aid appropriated to Clay County is for the entire county, including the city of Moorhead. And so those $160,000 funds are based on a county appropriation that is countywide. It's just that then there's additional funds specifically for the city of Moorhead based on the legislation and how that was allocated, and that was not something that I was aware of until very recently.
Mr. Chair, in that regards, I, you know, I think with what the state did, it's a step in the right direction that, for the proper responsibility for the proper government to handle some of these issues, to suggest that local communities can, can handle or to end homelessness and all of those things without the help of the state and federal government is, is, it's just not doable. And, but in, in regards to you on 160, and this is the proposal that I had made, is that we would commit the 160 for two years in terms of my personal thoughts on it, and then if the city would, would, again, we could get up that $1,500,000 that I talked about. Now, granted, there's some of the things in your budget that don't qualify for those funds, but those funds that we, that we talked about matching the city with would qualify, that we would do under our levy.
Under the levy, correct.
So because, because we would have to, in addition to committing the 160 for the two years, then we would be committing, you know, up to matching the cities 260, so that'd be an extra $100,000 a year. But let me settle that, and I, I'm gonna go to Commissioner Moser's comments too. So, you know, sometimes we feel like we're in a catch-22 here, because if we don't vote for what you're asking for, we don't support affordable housing, and we don't, that's not the case whatsoever. The fact of the matter is, is Clay County is the agency that has to cover a gamut of things that are probably not the things that you necessarily like, like to be dealing with, all the social services, all the social issues that we have that go on. And so we have to look at things from a broader perspective as well, and our hat isn't just on, on just one particular emphasis, and, you know, Commissioner Gross asked, well, is this in the levy? No, it's not in the levy, but it is on our property tax statement. It's new dollars on our property tax statement that, that weren't there. And, and, you know, so, and again, I'm, I'm preaching that we have a lot of people in our, that want to stay in their homes, who are senior citizens, who, who don't want to have all these increases. We're just one government entity. You're gonna have the school board, you're gonna have the cities, you're gonna have the townships, you're gonna have all those different entities that still have to add theirs on to this, and at some point in time, we have to kind of draw back. I won't support 500 in, in December, I'm gonna let you that know right now, but, but I hope that there's some, some good success in trying to obtain these shared costs. Now, you mentioned that the counties is a countywide 160, and that the cities is just for the city of Moorhead. The fact of the matter, though, is, is a vast majority of the counties' demands on the county funds come from the city. So, so I think you make, a good case can be made as to why those funds should go, what, what better agency do we have in Clay County to work with these things than the HRA, than the Clay County HRA? So I'm hopeful that you'll have some success in, in working this, and Commissioner Moser has a good idea, maybe working with the city. I don't want to volunteer anybody either, but, but I think there's some more dialogue has to happen on it.
Well, we are all part of committees that ask far less than $500,000 on a levy, so the priority is important.
Okay. You know, I'll, I'll support today, just to keep it going, but I won't support it in December. Just be aware of that.
You for the comment? Okay, we got a motion to approve Resolution 6-20-23-1, as presented. Am I correct on that? Okay. All in favor of this motion?
Aye.
Okay. We'll pass that as this, but.
We'll see you in December, if not earlier. Thank you.
Hopefully with a better deal. Okay. Okay, request approval to adjust the Clay County Board of Commissioners meeting schedule and set the truth in taxation meeting date.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. As this board recalls, every January, we establish our meeting dates for the county Board of Commissioners. Generally, each year, we also coincides, Tuesday coincides with the Association of Minnesota Counties Annual Conference that we held in the Twin Cities. This year, that conference is gonna be held between December 4th and December 6th, leaving us not present for a December 5th meeting. So the recommendation, first recommendation would be to cancel the board meeting on, on the 5th and not reschedule. The second recommendation would be with truth in taxation being tentatively scheduled December 12th at 6:00 p.m. I would look to move our board meeting, which regularly scheduled at 8:30 on the 12th, to a 5:00 p.m. meeting. With that, I yield for any questions.
Mr. Chair.
Yep.
So with not having a meeting on December 5th and moving to the 12th and wanting to have that meeting at 5:00 p.m., do you think that we might have significant staff issues where we might want to start earlier in the day so that we don't have to ask them to come after 5:00 p.m. to give their presentations on items?
We, we could certainly do that. Historically, you've done it, just done it the hour before. Most of the time, unless it's a significant issue, our board, our department heads will, will bring their agenda item at a later time.
Okay.
I think too, the 5 o'clock is sometimes a short time, but I'm relying on Jackie to get his all out of there and time for that. There's some good scheduling there. Okay. Any requests to do with that?
I'd move the request to change the times, as presented.
Second.
We request to change, to cancel the December 5th meeting and to move the December 12th meeting to 5:00 p.m., and also have the truth in taxation at 6:00 p.m. We got a motion to second. Any further discussion?
Just to clarify, in the memo, it says 5:00 p.m., but Commissioner Gross just said 6:00 p.m.
Pardon?
Just to clarify, on the memo, it says the truth and taxation date and time would be 5:00 p.m. or 6:00 p.m.?
6:00 p.m. for the truth and taxation.
Truth and taxation at 6:00 p.m. Our commission meeting is at 5:00 p.m. on December the 12th. No meeting on December the 5th.
Correct.
Okay, all in favor of that motion?
Aye.
Aye. Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, we're still ahead of a public hearing meeting. We ready for, there's no one here for substantive abuse, so we can probably do a committee report, huh? Do you have something else that we can do?
I was just gonna ask Jackie, is Cecilia planning to be here this morning, you know, on the memorandum of understanding agenda item? And probably an update, update would be the best path forward, our commission.
Okay. Dave, you wanna give your report?
Sorry about that. First meeting I attended last week was on the 19th. The planning commission for the city of Moorhead had two, two items on the agenda, both of which passed with the stipulations that were included in staff research. One was MHI Minnesota, conditional use permit for self-storage facility. They moved a building at 3220 8th Street South. The next was a request by Jay Knopf on behalf of the Minnesota DOC, or DOT, for work on the, the underpass that they're doing on 8th Street, or planning on 8th Street, just some conditional use permits for a floodway and some work on storm sewers, and those both passed. Attended the Association of Minnesota Counties Fall Policy Conference, the first day of which, on the 13th last Wednesday, I attended the board of directors meeting, being an alternate for my policy committee, pretty much in, in respect for the time, it was pretty much a regular business meeting, had a couple of presentations, nothing that impacts on either the public or this commission. On the second day, we had, AM, second day after the, on the 14th, after the welcoming and the general session was, was opened, had a presentation of three panels that covered issues, one of which was solution for county dispatch workforce shortages. As we all know, we're having difficulties in a lot of areas, such as our corrections, law enforcement, and although we don't have as profound a problem here, because the Red River Dispatch Center is fairly close to being staffed most of the time, there's some counties in, particularly in North Minnesota, that just can't keep staff their dispatch centers, and they discuss some of the things that are being done to try and address that. We also had a panel on the AMC Tax four picture update and family and community resource centers in Minnesota. Second half of that day was devoted to the policy meetings, and I'm on the public safety policy committee. We had a very informative emergency ambulance service report about some of the legislative needs to fund ambulance services, particularly in rural Minnesota. We had a discussion about state of 911. Director Wahlberg came in of the Emergency Communication Network. She did a great job of addressing the issues we're having with 403, and I was asked to do a presentation on that. I'm on the technical committee for the revision of chapter 403, and it is pretty much ground to a stop. We're trying to work with the providers of hardwire services, the, the amount of calls that they service is now 5% of the total calls. Most of the calls that come through 911 centers are either cell phones or VoIP, and they still are costing us about 4.5 million a year, whereas all the rest of them cost us about 5 million a year to get those calls to the gateway of the 911 system with address information attached. Lobbyists for the hardwire service providers have stopped this. We've tried to get an update of the, this statute for three years now. It's never gotten to a vote. It's never gotten out of committee, and we are going to have serious loss of federal support for our PSAPs in coming years because our statute is so outdated, it doesn't address next generation 911, and funding for that is gonna require that it be contained in our statute, and it's being waylaid on that. So this is something that we're hoping federal legislational address, but at this point, we're, we're really gonna have to get the word out to the other commissioners, and I did that in my presentation, that this is a serious issue, and if it isn't addressed, it's gonna cost us millions of dollars, not just on what we're paying to get 5% of the calls serviced, but what we'll lose in, in next generation 911 funding.
Excuse me, just a minute. Well, you can finish your report when we get done with everything else. Thank you for that so far, and at this time, we'll take a motion to open the.
Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion to open the public hearing to continue. Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion to open the public hearing to continue, consider a petition to re-survey Morkin Township Sections 31 and 32.
Second. Okay, we got a motion as second to open the hearing on Morkin Township Sections 31 and 32. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay.
Good morning.
Way there. Mark?
Good morning. My name is Mark Sloan. I'm the Director of GIS here at Clay County. In 2014, Clay County decided to discontinue the Office of the County Surveyor. And in 2015, GIS Department was tasked with contracting with a firm to perform surveyor services as well as to complete our section corner remonumentation project. Since that's my department, that's why I'm the guy sitting in this chair today presenting this to you. I'll explain a little bit more about what's going on, but before I do that, I wanted to mention that we have some subject matter experts here on hand as we go through this. If we have any questions, we have Mike Leeser, who is Assistant County Attorney, that can, is here. We've got Matt Jacobson, our Planning and Zoning Director. Kimberly Savage is our County Recorder, and Nick Stottlemann is a Registered Land Surveyor with True North Surveys, which is our contracted surveying firm at this time. We received a petition to survey Sections 31, 32 of Morkin Township. Remember, a month ago I was here, we set, this is the date for the public hearing to discuss that petition. Since that time, notice was given. We printed the notice of this meeting three weeks in a row in the official county newspaper. We also personally delivered the notice of the meeting to each of the landowners in those two sections, many of which are here today to participate. Let me go through this a little bit. Again, just about where we are in the county. This is Clay County as a whole, and we zoom in. It's just, Morkin Township is just northeast of where we are right now, and Sections 31 and 32 are in the southwest corner of that township. Here is the two sections of land that we're talking about, and the landowners there, and I can turn on a photo for you so you can see what it looks like there. And with the petition that we received, what the, lists a bunch of corners that are in, that are being declared as defective, or, and these are the corners that are the most disputed right here at this time. One thing I'd like to mention about these disputed corners is this, the information relating to these corners is, you know, is originally surveyed many times over the years, but in 2010, our county surveyor at the time, Brian Rittenhouse and Associates, surveyed these corners. They filed certificates on them. There was some dispute about where the location of those corners was. It eventually ended up in court. There was a court case that took place in 2014 and 2015. And on October 13th, 2015, Judge Galen Va determined that the Rittenhouse and Associate corner certificates identify the true and correct location of the section corners in these two sections. Okay, so we have that in play, or has taken place. One thing I wanted to mention quick while I just had it here, I talked before about our section corner remonumentation program, which actually looks at all of the section corners in our county. This slide gives us a quick overview of where we sit at this moment in time at the end of 2022 with that project, which has been going on since 2015. The green triangles are the ones that are completed, and our goal is to turn them all green throughout the county. The section corner remonumentation program targets townships at a time, so we do a whole township specifically. They'll do the outside of the township and then the inside, and clean up all the section corners and get them recorded and certified so that everything is like we need it to be. What we've been doing with that program over the years is we try to work with contiguous townships so that we can share a border with the township that we've already surveyed. Last year, we finished up with Screed Township. This next year, we'll be working on Holly Township is the one they'll be working on yet later this year, as we're working through that. Okay, so this hearing that we are having right now, all parties interested may appear, and what the County Board is going to be asked is to either reject or grant this application. If the petition is granted, the County Board will appoint a survey to conduct that survey. And based on the statutes that we're following, that were basically initiated with the petition, we have a specific set of rules we have to follow with these statutes, the costs of that survey, if it's undertaken, have to be assessed to the tracks affected, which we, the properties in those two townships. If the petition's denied, we'll eventually survey that township as part of our remonumentation program. We'll get there, and we'll get to these corners, and we'll be able to look at them again at that time. So with those pieces of information, specifically that there's a cost to this, I don't exactly know what a survey of this type would cost, but I know that we use a ballpark number of anywhere from $1,000 to $1,800 a quarter, our corner, when we're having section corners done. So we're talking anywhere from $12,000 to $24,000 to have this survey work done. So it's a significant cost. So my staff recommendation to you as a board is that we would deny this petition, primarily because of two things. One is, there's a large cost to it that would impact those property owners. And secondly, there's a court case that has already decided where these section corners are supposed to be.
Any questions from the commission? Go ahead.
If we proceed with a denial on this, what timeframe do you see the county's regular standard procedures? I know this is not adjoining anything we've already checked monuments on. What timeframe do you think we would get to this?
I don't know exactly, because right now, the amount of funding we've been, you've been kind enough to provide us for the section corner remonumentation program, doesn't complete an entire township in one year. It's taking us about a year and a half or more to do each township. So depending on what direction we go next, it could be several years unless we're directed to do it sooner. But it could be several years before we get to that part of it. Let me go back up to this map a second. One of the things I want to mention is we're doing the remonumentation program, we're targeting the east half of our, or third of our county, specifically because there's quite a bit of stuff going on in the west two-thirds, specifically things like drainage ditches and buffer strips and all these other things that are having surveys done, diversions, that kind of stuff. So those corners are being collected as part of those projects. So with our remonumentation program, we've been specifically trying to stay away from those areas to places we know there's not any survey work taking place. It's trying to get the most bang for our dollar that way. But that's why we started on the east edge. But over time, we'll move throughout the county and finish them all is the goal over time.
And I guess obviously, the corners in question are not going to have any third-party surveys done that would address their needs.
Not that we're aware of.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions?
Mr. Chair, Morkin, can you go back to your map there for one second? So the red, the status is, what does the red mean?
Red means we do not have a recorded corner certificate on that corner, which means the corner may be lost, and that's where we would have restored. They'll recover the section corner and then file a new certificate. So the red ones are ones that are just not, we don't have anything on them.
And the green has been certified as correct?
Yes. It's got a section corner certificate filed with the Recorder's Office. We've got coordinates for that corner for our GIS system. It's in good shape, and it's ready to be used by other people, is what it's for.
Early on, you showed a map of the two contested townships, or quarters, sections, I guess.
Yes. And that's got the corners colored there. They're, in this case, they're blue and red. The blue ones are, they have a recorded certificate on them, but we've not, we don't have coordinates for them yet. And the coordinates are the piece that the GIS needs to do what we do.
But I saw on that map, one mile, it looks like it'd be one mile straight north of 100th Avenue, there is a green.
Yeah. Yeah, and that's probably because there was a major ditch or something, or something, some sort of highway project. I don't know exactly what would cause it, but yeah, there could be something that took place that caused those corners to be collected.
Across that
Yeah.
Or that east-west.
Yes.
How many property owners would be involved in paying for this?
There's nine property owners. Large, large bunch of them are right, right here.
Okay, if there's any further questions, bring the petitioner up here, or?
Whoever wants to talk, yeah.
Whoever wants to talk in this, come forward, identify yourself, please. Any comments from anybody? Turn your mic on, please.
You really want to hear me, huh?
Yeah.
Jerry Zimmerman, I guess I'm the culprit behind all of this stuff. This all started in 2010, and I think the PowerPoint presentation, I don't know if you've all seen all of it, presents pretty much the whole case that I have for this. It amounts to the county surveyor not doing his job and not having adequate oversight by the commissioners to what he was actually performing. The certificates that he filed are not complete per statute of Minnesota. The Bureau of Land Management guidelines, he didn't follow any of that, which Minnesota has adopted. There's so many errors in all of this, and it even goes to the court case because they didn't spell my name correctly. I don't know how many hours you want to listen to everything that there is wrong with all of this.
Well, because I'd be interested in hearing what happened. I mean, why, why do you feel it's not the right spot, or what?
Well, ultimately, Rob Roberts, who is the previous county surveyor, I had hired him to survey for my portion of this. Rasmussen's and Sather's had hired Rittenhouse to do a survey of the south half of Section 31. And ultimately, he, you know, we went to court, and the case went against us, of course. And then after the court hearing, Roberts was able to find a 1904 survey that corroborated the original location of the east quarter corner of Section 31, which agreed with his father's location of that quarter corner. It was outside the time of appeal, and, you know, appeals for those kinds of things, you can't, you have, I think it was 60 days or something like that, and you can't introduce new evidence. So this was a piece of new evidence. And Mark has that.
I do. What Jerry's talking about is, he provided us with 127-page PowerPoint that describes all of his concerns with everything that was done.
So you're saying that Rob Roberts, what he did wasn't right, or?
No, Rob Roberts Sr. actually was correct. He had done a 1960s survey of Section 32.
Okay.
And the location that he had provided for that east quarter corner, or the west quarter corner of Section 32, which is the same as the east quarter corner of Section 31, was a 3/8 inch rebar stuck in the road. And when Rittenhouse came along and re-surveyed it, they determined that the new quarter corner that he determined it to be was 33 feet to the north of that original stake or monument.
And now the judge certified something too, didn't he?
Right. And actually, I can quote it right here. The court finds, so, in that particular issue, the court finds testimony of the surveying methods of the plaintiff's expert Evanson, who worked for Rittenhouse and Associates at the time, to be more accurate, professional, and reliable compared to the surveying methods of the defendant's surveyor, Robert J. Roberts II, which, so the court sided with the work that was done by Rittenhouse and Associates.
Okay. And you don't agree with Rittenhouse's survey, I take it? Okay.
Well, and it's not only me. I had Kurt Scarpole, who was the head surveyor over at Houston Engineering, involved in all of this. And he provided an overlay of the three surveys, the 1904 survey, and the Rittenhouse survey, and the Roberts survey. And of course, the overlay agrees, the 1904 survey overlay agrees with that quarter corner location of the Roberts surveys. And furthermore, the Bureau of Land Management manual, which is like 155 pages long, if you care to read it,
All right.
is a great deal of technical information, okay? And it basically says in there that the first survey in time needs to be proved incorrect if the later survey disagrees with it. And the 1904 survey is the only one that Clay County has on record at the Recorder's Office.
Mr. Chair.
Go ahead.
Can I ask, maybe a question, maybe for Kimberly? I don't want to put you on the spot here, but oftentimes, when there's transactions that deal with the change in ownership of property, there's surveys that are done. Do you know, do you know, do you know if there's been any surveys done based on maybe change of ownership issues in those areas that would either confirm or suggest otherwise to what is currently the?
I don't, I did not look at that. Did you?
We have the ones from 2010 that were done then by Rittenhouse.
Okay, I guess, I guess what I'm, what I'm talking about is, you know, if I go out and I buy some land, and especially if I'm gonna have that land financed, they might want to have a survey done to make sure that
Right.
what I'm getting is accurate. Has there been anything done like that that could either confirm or deny either of these surveys?
Well, and the thing with the surveys is, the county only requires them when you're splitting or changing a tax parcel. So there's many, many surveys that are done throughout the county that we don't have record of because we haven't required them.
So they're not recorded, then?
So they're not, well, they're not filed in our office.
They're not filed, okay.
Yes.
So they could have been done, but just not filed?
They could have been done, we just don't have record of them because we don't require it unless they're changing or splitting their tax parcel or something like that.
Not just change of ownership?
Right. It's not required at a change of ownership.
Okay. That answers my question. Thank you.
So do you farm that land, then, or who farms that land that you just?
Well, Farming Corporation, my son and I.
Okay.
The north, the north half of Section 31, and the northeast quarter of 32, and the southwest quarter of 32. One further comment about the Rasmussen, the survey that was provided to Rasmussen's. A technical detail about that survey is that it is also defective, according to the Bureau of Land Management, and it's something called latitudes and departures. And what it basically says is that if you travel across a traverse, north, south, east, and west, you should come back within a certain error of the beginning point. And that survey is also defective because it's outside of the limits of error.
Question. And that is the, that is a report from the Bureau of Land Management, or is that your interpretation of the situation?
Well, it's surveyors. You can ask your expert surveyor here about it, if you wish.
Well, you're the one
Roberts, Roberts.
You presented the information. Is that your interpretation of it, or is that some Bureau of Land?
No, it was Rob Roberts and Kurt Scarpole corroborated that.
Okay.
And I guess in addition to errors, that there are, all of the recordings of the certificates that Clay County has, that Rittenhouse did, are defective because they don't have the bearing and recorded with the distance to the next monument on them. They also require a plat to be recorded with it, the surveyor's notes, and none of that has happened.
Well, if you, if we remove that corner now, wouldn't that affect all the other corners?
Yes, absolutely. So, but just because, just because the certificate has some errors So, but just because, just because the certificate has some errors on it doesn't mean that the corner is in a different location. It could still be exactly where they say it's supposed to be.
But with the 1904 survey as the basis of a new survey of that point, I believe that you're going to find that everything will go back to what it was prior to 2010.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I just want to clarify, sorry, what the county's in the process of doing is exactly what we're talking about. So we're going through section by section and township by township, moving from the difficult part of the county up. So basically, if this petition is granted, what we would do is appoint another surveyor to do all of this, and then the cost of the survey, the process, would then be incurred by all of the landowners that in this?
In those two sections.
In those two sections.
Yes.
So similar to ditch benefit, right? It would just be allocated however, and they would pay for that. Now, if the process goes through that we're doing, that will be absorbed by the county budget, correct?
Correct.
So we get to pay no matter what?
Pardon?
Yeah.
You said the landowners out there get to pay no matter what?
As part of the whole process. I mean, you know what it is.
The way it goes.
Right, but you know what it is to contract work for a specific set versus the broad set. I mean, sometimes that is substantially more, is my point.
Okay, if those marks or monuments are in the wrong spot, how would that affect your farming? Would you farm more? You said you were farming it now, right? Is someone disputing?
Well, it's about three acres that affected our land in Section 31.
So someone's saying that's their land, or?
Well, Rasmussen said that, yeah, it was their land.
Okay.
That was exactly what the suit in court was about, was basically a trespass issue.
All right, the monuments are in the right spot. Okay. Go ahead.
So follow up to that. So not knowing, I mean, not knowing exactly how the lines lay as far as ditches, anything like that anyways. When Rittenhouse came back with the new spots, did you change the amount of land you were farming or you were still farming?
Yes.
And so there was a new definition of field coming into it?
Oh, the boundaries between the north half and the south half.
There was a minimum rate, net rovers or anything?
No.
And that, and that's been going on since 2010?
Ten.
Right.
So since 2010, you've been farming, was it farmed by the other, Rittenhouse?
No, the original survey took place in 2010.
Yeah.
By the Rasmussen's and Sather's.
Okay.
Okay. It took until 2015 for the thing to go to court. At that time, they took possession of that portion of Section 31. I ended up paying fees for trespassing and so on and so forth for their court expert witnesses. It's all in the finding of fact by the judge. And at that time, we lost use of that land.
Okay. You have anything further to present?
Not really.
Okay. Is there someone else that would like to speak? There's no one else in the audience who wants to talk about why it's theirs or why the monument's in the wrong spot? Thank you.
I'd ask, I'm just ask a question to the people here. I mean, we aren't going to get any opinion from anybody whether they want to be part of these charges or not.
Let's have this individual come to the table and then present himself and address the board.
Tell us who you are. Landy Sandal, so I own a quarter section to the east, you know, so I'm not involved in that court case or whatever, so I'm not sure if, but if they resurvey, my property taxes are going to be going up quite a bit versus getting distributed amongst the whole company, a county, over this. So I'm not, but I don't think anybody wants to pay more. I mean, thank you. Yep.
Will this affect you land-wise potentially?
Um, I'm not sure. I've only talked to him a couple of times, and one time was when he was digging up the, digging up the road, and there's a, there's a ditch. We own two property lines, and there's a ditch along the one, and he's, when he was digging it up, he's, oh, no, I'll, I'll never worry about moving that line there or whatever, so. But if, I don't know what his main goal is, if he's just going to keep going across the county because he owns property everywhere or what, but.
Thank you.
I guess, Rasmussen's my name. And I originally came here just to listen because we'd hired what we felt was a reputable land surveyor to check these property lines. And I don't have the intellect to dispute his findings. And the findings were that there was an encroachment on the property that my wife had inherited from her parents. And I didn't believe that Jerry was encroaching on this land in any malicious way. It was only because there had not been any defined survey, to my knowledge, that had been taken. So when I contacted Rittenhouse, like I said, I believed him to be a very reputable surveyor. They went ahead and did their business, and we got the findings of their facts. And Jerry was not real happy with, with those findings. And I guess that's pretty much what has brought us to this point today, although we did, we did have a court case. And Jerry's attorney represented his side of the dispute, and our attorney represented our side. And the judge, Judge Vaughn, made a determination. We're not talking about a lot of land, but at the point that I brought this to the attention of Jerry, I felt that the encroachment was not something that was going to stop. Because he was always in the field days or maybe even weeks prior to, when I was in the field. And so by just allowing him to be out there, he was basically setting what the boundary was. And I didn't think that that was the way things were supposed to be done. So from that point, we had a couple, Jerry and myself had a couple of discussions, and he just determined that he was going to continue to farm what he had been farming, and I could learn to live with it or we'd have to do something else. And that's what brought us to the court case. It appears that Jerry is still dissatisfied with the court case, so that is what brought us here today.
Well, because Jerry is saying that the 1904 survey is correct and the 2010 is not correct. Am I understanding this right?
Correct.
Okay. Yeah.
So I know what it is to have a farmer come over on what I think is my land and create a new boundary or being challenged, I'll put it that way, depending on what crop's being put in first. So I guess I'm going to ask a question. Since, since the determination in 2010, going back to 2015, has that, has that new boundary been honored? Are you, are you farming the land that the court has said you're entitled to?
That line has been honored.
Okay, thank you.
If in three or four years, the normal process takes place and the new monuments would indicate a change in your property line, would you honor that?
I believe I wouldn't have a choice. Okay, thank you.
On 2010, were those monuments moved?
They weren't moved, they were just located where they were supposed to be, is the way I understand it. I don't know the exact process, but.
Just a minute, what was Mr. Rasmussen? Are you done with your comments, or do you have anything further to say?
I believe I'm done with my comments. I just thought if there was anybody had a question, I would.
Very good, okay.
Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Zimmerman?
So a little bit of history of remonumentation by the county surveyor. And I believe this is correct. The monuments that were on the east side of Section 31 were not certified as government monuments at any point prior to Rittenhouse's certifying them. I believe the northeast corner of Section 31 was certified like a year prior, and there's a certain process that should be gone through prior to certifying a pin in the road as a monument. They're supposed to look back at prior county surveyor's records to find out, you know, what the history is. And your certificate, the one that the county requires, has a page that is supposed to give lineage of what uses were of that monument and who certified it originally and so on and so forth. And Rittenhouse had the opportunity to find that information for quite a number of years for the east quarter corner and wasn't able to because of its location at the Recorder's Office wasn't very obvious.
Okay.
And even today, if you wanted to go on your website and find that, it's labeled incorrectly, okay? And how much effort he went into in actually trying to find this stuff, I don't really know. It seems that he didn't go to very much extended effort to locate the information that would have been required on those certificates.
Now, you're throwing me off a little bit now. Are you saying the monument's in the right place, but it's just written wrong into the documents?
I'm saying that it wasn't certified as a government monument prior to 2010.
And you're saying it's 33 feet off from where it should be?
That's the difference between what Rittenhouse says is there and what the Roberts survey says is there. In addition to that, there was two pins in the road. The Roberts survey of his father, which was a 3/8-inch rebar. And then you went seven feet to the south, and there was a cut railroad spike, okay? And if you were actually to try and find out information about all of these things, it's very difficult. The cut railroad spike agrees with the southeast corner of Section 31. There was a cut railroad spike found there also. Rittenhouse didn't acknowledge the second pin that was in the southeast corner. So, you know, if you're confused, it gets really confusing about all of this stuff.
It's getting that way further every time you talk about it. All right.
So one thing I need to mention, too, is all of those, that information was addressed by the court. They looked at a lot of, all that stuff, and they're the ones that determined that the Rittenhouse survey was better than the Roberts survey as far as using the correct information. And the section corner certificate he's talking about, I actually have it right here. It's, if anybody needs it, but there's, we actually have a surveyor here if we have to answer more specific questions, but the way the east quarter corner is determined is based on a distance between the corners.
Proportionate.
Yes, a proportionate measurement between the northeast corner and southeast corner. What really happened was the northeast corner was determined to be in a different location than what the Roberts survey has used. And actually, it was done as part of Section 29, which is to the north of here. But it was why the Rittenhouse numbers ended up different and why the corner moved to a different location, because they used different information. And the court ruled that that was done correctly.
I'm just concerned that if we move this corner, it's going to throw everything off, isn't it, there?
Exactly, yes.
I mean, are you aware that, Mr. Zimmerman, that if we say that this monument is not in the right spot?
The east quarter corner only affects the boundary lines in the center of each section. The, the section corners moving would change hardly nothing because the change that those distances are are not that significant.
But I thought you clarified it was three acres.
Yeah, in Section 31. But there's also the fact that in Section 29, Paul Anderson ended up with his lot, and I explained this in the PowerPoint presentation, his lot line ends up being within a few inches of his house because of the Rittenhouse survey that, you know, that they determined was the northeast corner of Section 31. And so if you move that in agreement with the 2000, or the 1904 survey, it gives him, you know, an adequate distance between the corner of his house and the, his boundary for his lot.
If it's correct.
Well, you have to determine something is correct.
Right, and I, I.
If you, if you have a house and you put your house right on the boundary line, does that improve the value of the house any?
If it's not placed correctly, there's a larger problem. Right? I mean, and I, I agree with what Commissioner Kramonoff has said. I've, I mean, been on the same end of having a survey done, and all of a sudden, there's, there's a change in what was farmed on versus, by one party versus the other. And so I'm not saying that we need to make sure it's correct. My concern is, do we jump ship and do one before the whole process? Because as you said, the one that is, I don't know if you said Section 29 or a mile south of you or what, I want to make sure that's, that's correct as well.
That's up to the surveyor. Your official survey.
Mr. Chair, you just, you just brought up somebody's name. Did you mention the name Anderson?
Yep. Paul Anderson is, there's, there's a building site, and Mark Scobie in the south half of Section 29.
So is this, Mark, is he the owner of that?
Yes.
So why wouldn't he be listed as an affected?
I don't know.
He's not inside these two sections.
Actually, the 1904 survey would affect, if you were to agree with those locations, it would affect Sections 30 and 29 also. Quarter corner in that, those two sections.
I guess what my concern is, if we're not going to go by Rittenhouse's survey, makes me wonder about all kinds of corners then.
Right. All the, I haven't seen all of Rittenhouse's certificates on your website, but all of them have the same problem. They're defective because they don't have the bearing listed and then he never recorded any of the surveyor's notes or plats that should have gone with it.
That doesn't mean they're not accurate.
It doesn't, but it means by the terms of the statute that they're not correct.
In the court case, was it ruled not correct because of that?
We didn't, we didn't know about all this at that time. I dug all this stuff up.
But those were included in the case, correct?
Yes. The certificates that Rittenhouse supplied. And interestingly enough, the statute allows for two certificates to be filed for the same location. And it doesn't give you any means of resolving that.
Sure, I believe it does, which would be litigation, which took place.
Yes, I guess so. Expensive.
And anybody else who wants to speak, yeah, come forward, please. Identify yourself, please.
All right, here?
Have a chair.
All right, thank you very much.
I'll just who you are, please.
Hi there, I'm Robert Pearson. I'm, what is this, this little ID box in Section 32?
Okay.
Just, so my, this is the first time getting to meet my neighbors to the north. Hi, very nice to meet you. I'll have to say hi after, but, so we've just, you know, we've fairly recently moved into the area. I wish I had a little bit better of a memory on this. I guess what I'm trying to understand is what the practical effect will be for the two gentlemen.
Okay.
You know, the dispute sits between, so as I'm taking notes, so this, sir, you don't have any way to mark on, you don't have any way to mark on your thing there, right? That we could show everybody? Oh, that works, okay. So I think he's, I can't see it, what you can, oh yeah, perfect, he's got our place there.
Red dot down here.
So, since we've moved in, you know, and I wish I'd been paying better attention as kind of the last month, as I've been thinking about this, my understanding was that the line in question was that farther northern one, which has an enormous drainage ditch, and I was rather mystified why, how anyone could miss this, right? Because giant drainage ditch. The question I've got here is, so you've got disputed corner right there in the middle, right between Mr. Sandal's property and then Mr. Zimmerman's property, that surrounds my little lot there, right? Is, who is, sir, who is this?
Jones.
Okay. Is there, so there's no dispute between Mr. Jones's field. I wish I could remember, you know, as we've taken walks in the area to try to familiarize ourselves. I can't remember what exactly those, you know, the half-section border looks like. But, you know, and we never get over to that side of it, but if there's, if it's a straight line, clear across, you know, no dispute between these ones that are butted up against Does that just not, you know, does that not just continue in a straight line basically over to the Zimmerman and Rasmussen border there? For a matter that's going to cost everybody in this room, it sounds like about $3,000. If there's no road to enforce that border or whatnot, I guess, I'm just trying to figure out, like, is this a matter of sightlines? How do you tell? If there's no, if there's, I mean, everything else, there's landmarks, right? There's a big road there, there's a big drainage ditch there, there's roads there that all enforces us pretty good. If this is a matter of 3,000 bucks to a household, because.
Remind me again, is the dispute that the corners are all farther east or west or north or south?
North or south.
So there's, is there potential then that far south disputed corner is, what is the dispute, that it's too far north or south?
This one is, I believe, in the right place. I don't know that there's a dispute on its location, there's some concern about the certificate that was filed.
Okay.
It's this top corner that's the one that moved. When they resurveyed it, they used different information than what had been done before and placed it where it was. And then to figure out this middle one, they basically divide the distance in half and that's why it ended up moving over because of that.
Well, wouldn't the corners, if you take that top corner, we say that one's 33 feet off. Is that the one that's 33 feet off?
Yeah.
I mean, the two, one going east, the one going west, wouldn't they? If those two are right, can't we just measure from those two? I mean.
I don't, we're not surveyors here.
Yeah, I know, it's just, I don't know how one corner can just be off and the other two is aren't off.
Right. Yeah, they're all connected together.
And that is one of the reasons we're systematically moving the county surveys to where they take bearings off of locations that we've substantiated and we've marked.
Right.
So, in a hundred years, somebody's not going to have these headaches.
Because these, yeah, that's exactly why we try to do a whole township at a time, because they're all connected together. And when they originally were surveyed in 1859, the townships were surveyed, and then in 1870, when they actually drew the lines for the sections, they're trying to reconstitute something that happened that long ago that's been basically lost. So, yeah, that's the project and that's why it's so important.
I'm starting to wonder, well, should we just have it resurveyed? Do we need a third opinion now? I guess so.
I would, I'm just going to stand by my original recommendation. I've got a, you know, it's right here, I've got an order for judgment that identifies the Rittenhouse surveys as the true and correct locations of those corners.
Okay, very good.
I'm going to stand by that.
Do you have any other comments? Did you have any other comments?
No, I, you know, just trying to figure out, I suppose, is, you know, how, not sure where the question is really, you know, still, it's just, you know, there's a big road here, there's a big road there, there's a huge drainage ditch, you couldn't go 33 feet into the drainage ditch, you'd be in a drainage ditch. So, yeah, I'm trying to work out where.
I think you're two miles, you live two miles from disputed corner, don't you?
No.
That's one.
Right, I'm right next to one of them. And then we walk, that road's nice because it's nice gravel, so it's kind of quiet, so the family and I can get out and take a evening walk there.
But I thought it was the north one that was disputed.
It's only a mile, it's a section mile.
So, one thing we could do for you is after we're done here?
Mark, would you please, Mark?
Oh, sorry. I just, um, he could talk to our surveyor outside the meeting and if he just had any general questions.
Like, I guess my concern is, you know, for, I think for everybody that's here, $3,000 paid for these things that are marked, you know, by and large by fairly large landmarks feels pretty excessive, that's painful, so.
So, I mean, the dispute that went on in the court, Mark?
Yes.
It basically had to do with, from what it is, 33 feet, right? All up and down. And so if that would have changed, everything would have moved over 33 feet. And so maybe one of the questions for him, it would have been depending on when that section would have been platted out as a separate parcel, what did they measure off of?
Right.
Because there would be the potential, if the court would have found differently, that your property then could be 33 feet off.
Right. Yes, because he's, he's got a, basically a smaller area surveyed for where his farm or house is, and that's tied to a section corner of some type, yeah.
It had to be, at some point in time.
Yes.
For that to be platted, that those, that had to come off of a section corner.
Yes.
So, you know, so, I mean, if it changed by 33 feet, it could mean that you're, depending on when your pins were put in place for yours, yours could be off.
Yep.
If it was contrary to what the court opinion was in 2015.
Sure. I think I.
That goes, that goes to, you know, how far can this, how far can this go, but.
Do I have to ask to leave or?
No, you can.
Okay, bye.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay, we'll go again. Anybody else want to talk now? All right.
Mr. Chair, I move to close hearing.
Second.
Okay, we've got a motion, a second to close the hearing. All in favor?
Aye.
All right.
Mr. Chair, I, after listening to all of this and reading what I've listened to, I believe that we are in no position to act in contrary to what the court did in their findings, and so I move that we deny this request.
Second.
We've got a motion, a second to deny the request. Any further discussion?
Mr. Chair, if I can, I do want to talk, and it goes to some of the comments that Commissioner Moser made about, in our process for corners as we go along, and, you know, this is something we can maybe have a separate discussion with Mark on in terms of the timing of this. But we also have to keep in mind, as Mark talked about, in that whole eastern part of the county there, there's an awful lot of activity going on out there. And what we want to do is, we want to prevent.
Yes.
This from happening in some of those areas where there's a lot of activity. So, you know, I don't think that because we have one contested case, that we can necessarily move our current process. I mean, we can have the discussion about it, it's worthy of having the discussion, should we, should we go and do this now as opposed to just wait its turn in our normal process that we're doing? But I do think that we should still have that conversation as a board in terms of, you know, what we hired for 2024, do we want to take a portion of that and move there? I'm not in a position to make a decision on that either, but.
I mean, can they privately hire a surveyor?
Oh, yeah, and that's, yes, that's been done. Now, one thing I want to mention about what you're talking about too with the section corner remonumentation is we have money in our budget set aside to do that every year, which is wonderful, that'll also hopefully in 2024, becoming available grant dollars from the state of Minnesota to do that same work, which we will apply for, which would speed up what we can do is if we're able to gather that, get some extra money, so.
And that was also another reason for my motion to deny too. I, although it's a secondary issue, I don't believe that we should be having all these other landowners having to pay outside of this normal process that we would go through to certify our monuments and monument corners.
Mr. Chair.
I just, I'm just bringing that up.
And just ultimately, in any dispute like this, civil litigation is where you go. And that's been done, and I do not think that it's appropriate for this body to act as an appellate court and overrule the findings of a civil judge who has had evidence presented by counsel from both sides and has made this determination. It would be highly inappropriate unless there were indications that that ruling was based on something presented falsely or, and again, the more appropriate approach then, and they can accept new evidence into it after the case, you can refile or you can go to an appellate court. Court, if there's indications of illegal procedure, improper procedure, we don't need to get in the middle of all of that. That's why you have lawyers and that's why you have courts. And the court's spoken, it's not been appealed, it's, I think until we can go in there as part of our orderly process based on the entire county, until we can go in there in the order that the surveyors need, I think this stance.
Any further discussion? Go ahead, Paul.
Yeah, I choose stand beside, behind the court's ruling and would be in favor of the motion.
I'll call for the question. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. You're going to have to go with the ruling of the courts, I guess, so, that's where we're at right now.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
I don't know if we settle anything or not, but. Okay, we'll take a short break.
Thank you.
Are you going to handle that one or?
I'm going to assist.
You're going to assist, okay.
Thank you, Commissioner. Thank you, Commissioner Gross. We have had the good fortune, Clay County Public Health, of holding a, it's called the Positive Community Norms Grant through the Minnesota Department of Human Services for the last two years, and we have it for five years. Jason McCoy is our leader and he's working in the Dilworth-Glyndon Felton Schools and in those communities, so he is going to give you an update on that work.
Thank you, Rory. So, recently, up until two years ago, our tobacco prevention was funded through Clearway, Minnesota. You're probably familiar, Clearway Sunset, right before the pandemic happened. And so Public Health went looking for funding to continue this work. And what we found was a grant through Department of Human Services, in fact, I'll just forward, and we had to work with a school system that had up-to-date Minnesota student survey numbers, they had to have numbers that showed a need, and that's where DGF schools came in. And so, for the last two years, I'm just starting year three, this work has actually been funded to have me out there at DGF doing the work. And so I'm going to present this to you, we have some great information. The grant is called Positive Community Norms. It is a block grant from SAMSA that funnels through DHS to reduce underage substance use. And so these are the three substances, alcohol, vaping, and cannabis.
Excuse me, just a minute, you're talking about the high school or you're talking about the elementary school?
It's the middle and high school that I'm in.
Middle and high school.
Yes, absolutely, yes. We, our grant funded for sixth to 12th grade, but since fifth grade is housed with the middle school, we just kind of roped them in with us. So, by, the work in the past has always been about trying to scare kids, right? Trying to scare them into not using, scare adults into not, making sure that they don't use. And instead, this work is focused around elevating healthy choices by the kids and then also engaging the parents in education. And by doing so, we work to shift community norms. So I'm going to kind of walk you through how that goes. Forgive me, I could talk about this all day, so I'm going to do it in 15 minutes or less for you.
Okay.
So, our campaign name and also our coalition is Rebels United. We paired, of course, with the Rebel logo, and what we're hoping to do is elevate the entire community at the same time. We have a middle school and a high school youth group known as RISE, Responsible Individuals Striving for Excellence. They actually picked out their own acronym and name. And they work side by side with the student council to be able to help the other students make healthy decisions. Some of the work that we've done is focused heavily in communication because the message is what matters as we go forward. And so we have posters up in the school, we have stickers that we give out because that has become a big thing. I personally wasn't aware that stickers had made such a comeback, but evidently there's a lot that goes around there. We put our message on sign boards, as you can see there on the right. And one of the most important things is we bring out a shirt every year and we give one to every single student, every single staff member in fifth to 12th grade because it becomes a walking billboard. As you can see here, the boys' basketball team used our shirts as their warm-up jerseys. We also, I didn't take a picture of it for this, but we have a trailer that all of the sports programs are bringing around that elevate the fact that most. that all of the sports programs are bringing around that elevate the fact that most of our students are not vaping, most of them are not drinking alcohol or using cannabis. This very different mentality to bring forward, what we found is it kind of revolves around this, you can't scare kids anymore, you just can't, but everyone wants to be part of something that's good, and so when you can show the students that most of them are using healthy choices, making healthy and positive decisions in their life, then they want to be part of that, and they end up coming alongside, and I'm gonna show you exactly how that works here at the end, because we have some really awesome data. We also fund, because you can't tell kids not to use and not give them something fun to do, so we fund, we brought back the Winter Formal, the snowball for the high school, the middle school has a Spring Fling where there's a bunch of bouncy houses and all kinds of fun, and we really just promote a lot of healthy decisions that are being made already, and give them a place, them the kids, a place to come and exercise those healthy choices while having a good time. Lot of the activities that we've done, we were in the parades, we did, this last year, we did a student survey, I won't read them all, we did, we, we surveyed everybody in the DGF area, basically, to bring all of our data together, we, we funded the senior sunrise and sunset events, this year's was particularly cool, all of the seniors, they got Sandy's Donuts, and they wrote cards to all the incoming freshmen, what was the advice you wish you had gotten on day one? And so, just making those connections happen in the school, we come alongside the Day of Compassion for seventh grade, we walk in the parades to tell the community what we're all about, Magnitude Sports actually does the, the streaming for all of the fall sports, and we do sponsorships there to, to put the message out as well, so we really get that information out as much as possible, and here's how it works. The science of the positive sounds like rose-colored glasses, but actually, in, for the last thirty years, twenty years here in Minnesota, we've been working under this premise that the, the positive exists and it's worth growing. Most people have heard about ACEs, and most people have actually engaged and understand that those are very clear scientific reasons to help kids. Most people also don't know that there's the opposite, there's positive childhood experiences, for example, for every two adults that create a positive caring environment for a student, they actually reduce the, the possibility of that student growing up and using substances, increase their ability to go to college and have a healthy career, so there's a lot of really good things going on in this science. We work through this cycle of transformation, it's a, a beautiful thing, once you get to understand it, we start with spirit, that is your energy, that's why you became a commissioner, that's why you're sitting here today, why do you want to help Clay County? That got you out of bed this morning, but that wouldn't have done anything else, you would have never left your house if you didn't apply some science to that, right? We have peer-based science that allows us to be able to move forward with the best practices, and then you showed up, you have action, you put action to your knowledge, and you're doing things to make Clay County better, that's what we bring to our kids, and then you reflect, you think about how did it go, what can we do better, and that brings you back to your energy. With this, we use the core assumption that the positive exists right here in the community, and it's worth growing, and so instead of focusing on the negative and spending all of our resources on the negative, we focus on elevating the positive, because if you're familiar with Gallup studies, for example, they have proven that if you have a skill that you're good at and you focus on making it better, you can become a champion, right? And that's what we want. If you're not so good at something, let's say it's algebra, and, and you just struggle hard, you could pour all of your time and attention into it and get okay. Who wants to live an okay life? We all want to be awesome at what we do. The solutions are there, and we're finding them, we're, we're spotlighting them, and we're elevating them. I love this particular slide, if we want health, we must promote health, so many years of my career, I spent showing people those nasty tar lungs, right? This is why you shouldn't smoke, and instead, now we're showing that health exists, what does it look like, and what should we be striving for, and it's working, it's growing. So, our work goes like this, we uncover the positive, as I just pointed out, we measure those gaps, that's our surveys, who doesn't understand what's going on, and when, when we find those misperceptions, we challenge them, we point out the truth, and in doing so, we increase health. We are right now part of Cohort Four of this grant, every single cohort has seen positive things work, as misperceptions are challenged and move closer to reality, the reality, the actual use rates get better, meaning less kids use. Or, as Mark Twain said, it ain't what you don't know that gets you into trouble, it's what you know for sure that just ain't so. Or, if you're familiar with social media, and this one was a hit with all the kids, use the four Spider-Man, and this is Gandalf, so if you're not familiar, this is four different genres of movie mashed up into one slide, so messaging really matters. So here, without any further ado, let me show you, right now, combined average of middle and high school, ninety-one percent of our students in DGF school do not drink alcohol, ninety-five percent of them don't use marijuana, and ninety-two percent of them don't vape. That last number is huge for me, when Rory and I wrote this grant, we used the two thousand and nineteen Minnesota Student Survey, forty-three percent of the juniors class was vaping at that time. In two thousand and twenty-two Minnesota Student Survey, so just a, a year and a half ago, we had a combined average in the high school of twenty-four percent vaping, so if you do the math here, right now, we have eight percent, that is unheard of, to have such a great thing happening, but here's the work that we do. We say it like this. Yeah, go ahead.
What makes you feel that these students are filling these surveys out properly?
Great question, we actually, we do more cleaning of this data than any other survey in Minnesota, they go through at least six different filters in which we ask that question, and guess what, you're right, there's some of them that lied on the survey, and those get polled, there's some of them that went really fast, you know, if you can do a fifty, a fifty-question survey in three minutes, you probably weren't paying attention, those got polled, all of the ones that pointed out, like, you answered this question this way, or that question a different way, those got polled, so we, we are very confident, we have, this data has been brought down to there is a, a one percent possibility of wiggle room. So, yeah, it's an awesome question, we asked that same thing. So we ask, we say it like this, here's an, an actual question, how often do you use alcohol? And as you can see, our combined average, ninety-two point six percent of students don't, that's their actual use, and yet, when you look at that next line, the percent of students that accurately perceive, only fifty-eight percent. We want, that is our gap, we need to raise that. Now, I told you, we, we went to parents, we went to staff, we went to the community, sixty-six percent of the staff accurately understand that, sixty-seven percent of the parents and community members, that'd be kind of grandma and grandpa, people who would pick up the phone and answer the survey, twenty-seven percent. Here's our, the, our marijuana numbers, as you can see, sixty-three percent of the students didn't understand, the actual use rate was only, was ninety-five point eight percent is not using, and in vaping, that's the worst, thirty-nine point nine percent of the students understood the actual reality, and so that is our work, as we elevate those perceptions and help them understand that there's only a few that are actually using, we will be able to move them forward, and these percentages are going to get even better over the years. This is a five-year grant as we go forward, so we have three more years of work to do, and after that, we will help them apply for a drug-free community, so hopefully this will become a fifteen-year worth of work that we can keep doing. Knowledge is power, here's what we're doing this year, just a whole lot of extra work that we're bringing into the, into the school to continue elevating this, and that's what I have for you. What kind of questions might you have for me?
Mr. Chair, question on your survey and questions in regard to, you know, I, I am surprised, I think, kids that take the time to complete the survey will do it truthfully, and I think the people that aren't going to do the survey don't care about it, and I think probably would be the ones that not, wouldn't answer truthfully, so I agree with, with what you're saying. In regards to questions, do you ask, do you ask questions regarding the adults in their life, and if the adults in their life care about if they use or not, or supply, or turn a blind eye? I think kids would offer that up, because I know you're doing that anonymously, but would be curious to see if use is correlated to the adults in their life not really caring if they do or not.
Awesome, Commissioner Mojo?
Yeah.
Yes, yeah, I got it right, yes, you're a hundred percent correct, and we do ask those questions. Further, when we go and ask the parent survey, we ask them, do you use in the home? What do you think the average adult in the community lets you have, because we want to go to the parents and challenge their perception that so-and-so, you know, Rory's got the party house, and everyone's going to his house to drink and vape, and he's, he's letting things happen, we want to challenge those and help the parents also understand that most of the parents aren't letting that happen, because it, then it elevates that discussion, and also, you can imagine, and we've all had kids, if your teenager tells you, oh, I, the Beals' house is where all the party is happening, right? And you're like, oh, really? You can call the Beal house and be like, well, this says most of them aren't, Rory, I'm pretty sure this isn't happening, what do you think? So it makes these conversations happen, it's been, it's been really cool to watch it, watch it grow.
I want to comment on, not with this particular grant, but recent data, Minnesota Student Survey, Survey showed that locally, about fifty percent of high school students feel like they've got a caring adult in the school, which sounds really low, it's right on with the state norms, but it's also concerning, and so, with other work that we're doing, that's something that we're focusing on, because that's one of the strongest predictors of resiliency, when kids have difficult times or are gonna make tough choices, is having a caring adult in the school, so, that, that's being addressed in multiple realms.
Just a comment, again, congratulations for the continued, you know, the grant and the continued work, the second time I've heard this, and each time I find it, for me, really inspiring, I, I, anything that gives us positive energy toward creating a better, and as you will show over time, a more realistic perception of what's going on, how can that not be positive for your school district, how can that not be positive for our community? So, I'm just saying kudos to you.
Thank you. And, and I will let you know, we do have all of this data, we're working on some key finding reports, so if you're interested, I can make sure that that gets sent to you, so you can see them.
Good, Kevin.
Yeah, thank you. Jason, the, these, these numbers are encouraging, certainly from what you have going on in the grant within, within DGF, and what are you, how are you, how are you able, and I know the focus on this is DGF, we have several other school districts in.
We do.
In Clay County, what are we doing to share these positive, and what this grant is accomplishing in terms of positive message, what are we doing to, to take that from just DGF to the other schools?
Awesome question, we were, we were talking about that ourselves, so, on the positive side of things, Holly had this grant before we did, as well, Holly School, so they are five years ahead of us in making this work, unfortunately, they didn't, I don't know if they even applied, but they don't have a further grant keeping it going, so one hopes that it, the, the norms will keep going and not just kind of drift there. We are trying to encourage the other school systems to write, or, or to take the Minnesota Student Survey, because you have to have current data to show a need, right? And so, we're trying to, to get those through, there's only nine grant, of this grant, there's only nine awarded around the entire state for every five years, so we're already trying to work to make sure that we get it again in another one of our school systems.
I guess, I guess I'm, I'm, I'm thinking, you're going into, in this, in this grant, you're going in there with a, really trying to bring out a positive message, right? So, why does it take additional grant dollars to take that positive message to these other schools with what you've learned?
The, the amount of work that goes into this is a full-time position, so we would need a full-time position for each school to like, push this forward. It's a very interesting.
I would think it's, I would think it's pretty encouraging data that would.
It is.
Would, certainly, if I was on a school board, I'd be very interested in hearing about the successes of this and, and how that can be implemented.
Yes.
In my school district.
Absolutely.
I, I mean, I'm, I'm just, when I hear good things, I try to figure out how you, how can you take that to the next level?
I, I would a hundred percent agree with you, and we hope that that will happen. We've reached out, I mean, we, we try to help all of the schools, this grant specifically funds the position to be in DGF, and we want to share it, so we do try to, through our partnership for health, we do try to share through their worksite wellness and to school admin, it takes them buying in though, and wanting it.
Thank you.
Yeah, absolutely.
Any further, you have to present?
I'm, that was all I had for you.
Great.
Well, it's actually good news, very good news that you're telling us about, I mean, I really didn't expect the numbers to be that high, I just, I hope, I hope they're right.
Yes, it's, it takes a while to wrap your head around it, it's very interesting to see the numbers and how it works. Thank you.
Thank you.
Nice for our communities to go the other way.
Thank you.
You got some more, Roy?
It's Public Health Reportout Day, I guess, so we also have Sarah Dixon-Hackey, who is approaching the end of her second year, working on behalf of the county and public health in particular, to advance diversity, equity, and inclusion work, to identify and help subsets of the population that, that might need more help to ensure positive health outcomes, so Sarah's gonna give us an update on what she's been up to.
Welcome, Sarah.
Thank you, good morning, Commissioners. It's been a while since we've talked, so I really just wanted to give you an update on where we're at, now that certainly we've seen the pandemic efforts in public health come to kind of a conclusion and tapering into a different direction. The packet that I believe was forwarded to all of you summarizes kind of the highlights, if you will, over the last several months, looking specifically from a box, I would say approximately January of this last year to about now. What I wanted to really help you and myself look at was kind of the three primary areas of focus that we're seeing come out of this, one is really, of course, communications, so looking at that larger bridge of how do we streamline and connect our communities of diversity back to the public health services and initiatives, also, if we're looking at collaborations, it's supporting what entities are already doing, and certainly amplifying their efforts with what resources we have available to us, and outreach, I would categorize more so as concerted efforts of public health, bringing in either resources or information that might be in the form of education or training, or other sorts of, of skill sets that we can provide to them. So if we look specifically, I'm not gonna read through everything, it's a little bit exhaustive, but we look specifically, just starting with the communications, I would just highlight one of the key areas that certainly is a common thread for all of us across the community, is the concern about mental health, that certainly touches our diverse communities in any number of ways, we know from the data that we've looked at, many times, it can actually be exacerbated because of different social determinants of health that factor their, their mental health, and so, one of the big things that we did was look at the communication aspect of, are we getting the information in the formats that people are able to digest and receive that? So, as many of you already know, nine eight eight, the National Hotline Suicide and Substance Use Hotline that was released about a year ago in the summer, we went through and had that information based off the SAMSA FAQs, translated into five different languages, bringing those to some of our key collaborators, partners, and then also bringing it into a more digestible. partners, and then also bringing it into a more digestible form, which is magnets, which we all can understand is certainly another form of communication. That is, in a very literal sense, one of the initiatives that we've been pushing forward to, I think, expand our communication options. A key finding is that while we certainly have some access through Google Translate, it's very limited. As we know, the English language is highly nuanced, and that is not something that other languages don't see as well, which means that we have to be considered of the 20 or so dialects of Arabic, or the variations of, of, you know, phrases and, and words. When we're talking about public health initiatives, I'm very cautious and respectful for the fact that we want to get the right information in the right ways. Oftentimes, what's happening is that the interpretation is not always coming across, because other cultures may not have those literal terms. Again, Western culture is a different mode in terms of medicine and health. So a constant kind of, I think, conversation with some of our interpreting and translation kind of experts in the community, how do we continue bringing that information forward? So along the lines of communication, we did launch a extra page through Public Health that specifically is going to house just translated information and interpreted. Right now, it is specifically just the written translations of some information we've started with. We received a small micro grant of $5,000 from Medica to help support that. We hope and envision that maybe as we continue on, there'll be more opportunities. We have learned that literacy isn't necessarily something that every culture, just like ours, has a high rate of. So we are looking at also doing oral interpreting of some of the information, so that's accessible to all ranges. So again, communication really has been, I think, a concerted effort in being mindful and strategic on how we bring it in, so that we're being effective. Certainly want to just bring that, that barrier down as far as we can. In terms of collaborations, I think a really exciting one that we found was beneficial both to participants and, I think, also ourselves as an entity, was that we collaborated with some of the schools. Concordia College was one, M State was another. And we also collaborated with the Morehead Public Schools. So supporting them in their own diversity populations by bringing in this concept of what we call digital storytelling, which is really just kind of capitalizing on what a lot of the popular culture is doing right now, using mixed media to share personal experiences. We really refined it with a more streamlined focus on mental health. And we even, I think, brought it home to what were their experiences during the pandemic? How did it affect them personally? And so using the partnership of a contact that we had, Dr. Iptuson Belmahou, who works for New American Consortium, she had her PhD in cultures and language. She was able to help work with these students to walk through kind of these immersive digital storytelling workshops. The result was that we really found some incredibly impactful, and I would say therapeutic stories for the participants that we were able to share on the public health website. As far as outreach, I think in terms of just ongoing outreach, we find ourselves looking at different ways to work with some of our key partners in terms of bringing more mental health education. The first round of it, we worked with New American Consortium, Afro-American Development Agency, and then also Cultural Diversity Resources, and brought in professionals based on their selection. So again, really accessibility is key, but also having a choice, having a voice in that process. We wanted to engage them. Upon their selection, we brought in the presenter, you know, provided kind of that experience, and then surveyed them afterward. We did find that a little over 90% did feel very strongly that they received information they could bring back to their families and their communities. And when asked if they would want another round of information, we saw about 92% saying absolutely yes. We would like to see more information and training in regards to mental If we look at the final, probably three pages of your packet, just a clarification on this, so collaboration certainly can mean a lot of different things. This group or this listing of organizations that I've worked to build expanded or deeper relationships with goes beyond a simple meeting. We are either having conversations or in the process of building opportunities to bring in education or partnerships, or we already have done so thus far. So what questions, comments might I help you with?
Any questions for?
Mr. Chair?
Go ahead.
Thank you, Sarah, for the report. I am looking through your list of collaborative partners, and thank you for including a highlight of, of the mission statement, probably of the agency in which they work, but also, as you talk about building this network, it's really great to see that so many entities are really doing the work and making sure that we're partnering together to do the work to best serve the entire community. Really feel like you've hit on a lot of the areas that we had discussed, I think, a year ago and, and prior to you coming on, of areas that we wanted to better understand, but better get information to these communities in a way in which they can utilize it in the best way. And I think you're really doing a good job of that. So thank you.
Thank you.
Pity backing off that. Are there, I noticed you had, last year, groups get together. So in your collaborative effort, is that something that continues from time to time, where you reach out and have a, maybe a focus area where you kind of collaborate together with?
Sure. No, that's a great question. And to be honest with you, certainly this is a new development. My, my vision and what I've been trying to build is more of a regular connection point, so that's absolutely where we're moving with it. I try to, at least personally, over the last year and some months that I've been doing this work, connect with the different key groups at least, so the three that we talked about, as well as others quarterly, whether it's a Zoom meeting or talking with them. In terms of regular connections, we're always reaching out to them. So once a month, I'm always providing an email connection point or resources. But in terms of getting together collaborations, it really is dependent upon, I think, what I call social listening, and what their concerns are. So trying to find opportunities. But I wouldn't say at this point it's irregularly scheduled, it's more, I would say, responsive.
And I'm assuming part of it just takes time to create the relationships that they're, they're actually doing a lot of that on their own, right?
Absolutely.
Just working together on whatever issue they may have in common.
Yes, absolutely.
Yeah. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you for your report, and thank you for the work that you do.
Thank you.
And, you know, and I, and I'm, I'm really glad that focuses on mental health. But I have a question for you. It's kind of goes in a little bit different direction, and that's in regards to new Americans, new immigrants to this area. They, they might not be new Americans, but they might be new to this area. And how are we, are you seeing any issues in terms of, I'm going, I'm going down the workforce path here, because it's, it's critical, the critical issue throughout our state. And, you know, one of the, one of the things that we keep saying is, we're never going to solve that workforce issue without the assistance of new Americans and immigrants coming to our area. So are, are you seeing any, any hurdles in the way there? I, I know I go to, the businesses I go to, I see new Americans working, and I, and I, I enjoy them. I, you know, I, I think they bring a lot. But part, even part of the mental health issues can be related to economic stresses.
Yes.
So how, how are, how are we, how are we sitting in the workforce community in the areas that you're working with?
No, I'm so glad you, excuse me, asked that question. That's actually one of probably the top emerging issues that I hear from the communities in terms of new Americans or refugees or immigrants. And that is a concern about employment and access to meaningful employment. One of the points of discussion, so by trade, I'm an educator, I happen to work at the local colleges, and so the connection points that I've seen is oftentimes, A, certainly language is a barrier, but a big barrier is the credit for prior learning. So credit in other countries that don't necessarily transfer over to these cultures. That gap, which of course is a much larger issue for looking at the Boards of Higher Education and all those things, becomes a barrier, because now you have someone who is doing a job in another culture that may be of a higher status, now is maybe qualified for a much different type of job. And that in of itself certainly is an ongoing discussion. It's a challenge that I think as a collective community, we would have to have a bigger conversation about. But the other key issue, though, too, I would say, is always going to be transportation. We continue to run into that as a challenge for our individuals who maybe share a car amongst, you know, a family of five or seven, or individuals who are accessing jobs that are available to them that are only overnight shifts, but they have someone else that they have to get to school. So those kind of colliding at different challenges become, really, I think, a deterrent to being able to get meaningful employment.
I, that's, you just told me some things that I was unaware of. And, and I, you know, and I, I know we, we, we work with our local business communities, our chamber, and I, I think it would be really good, and maybe you already have, maybe they know that, maybe they don't, but I, I think it's worthwhile. I, this is the first I've, I mean, I understand there's always been a transportation issue. What I, most of transportation stuff I hear about is more rural, trying to get in to, for their needs, coming into community, into the cities. But from the transportation standpoint for employment, it's something I guess I haven't, I haven't realized could be an issue. And, you know, hopefully the business community can step up in, in that regard, if they need the help, to maybe find some solutions to that. So thank you for your answers.
I want to thank, you know, Jason and Sarah for, I mean, this has really been enlightening, telling us about all, everything that is going on. I mean, in our day-to-day operations, we don't realize it sometimes. And it's good to be informed about what we are doing in the county and what's going, happening in the county. And that's very good information you've given us. And I don't know, it's good news.
Well, thank you for your time. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Roy. Okay, back to regular business. Joe, approve, request to approve Clay County Soil and Water to participate in the fleet management program under Clay County.
Yes. Good morning, Mr. Chair, Board members. As you know, we, Clay County, we have a, we participate in the fleet management program through Enterprise. I kind of teamed up with Kevin over at Soil and Water. He had expressed some interest in, apparently they need some vehicle needs through that department. So we had to try to work with Enterprise to establish a, a solid connection. As you know, you can't, you have to have a 20-car minimum to participate with Enterprise to get into this program. So we, we had to establish, you know, the solid connection. It wasn't that hard to do. But they're allowing us to, would allow Soil and Water to have a sub-account under us. So today I'm asking to approve, to go ahead and do that. The Soil and Water would have complete control over whatever vehicle they are looking at. They would have access to the Enterprise team and, and be able to do that. So today I'm just asking for them to participate under a sub-agreement with Clay County. So, questions?
Would that money go through us then, or would that?
Uh, I don't, I, Soil and Water would make the direct payment, is what they would do, yeah. So they wouldn't be, wouldn't be invoicing, come to me, and then turn around getting that money from Soil and Water. They would, they would pretty much handle everything, so.
You just asked us to prove that they can be part of our agreement.
Yes, exactly. I think, I think the vehicle selection is, goes through the board and all that, so.
Right. Maybe just to comment on this, both Commissioner Kravinauf and I have been on that board and, and heard the discussion. We actually, I think, brought it up to them in, in a way, when they're looking at making a vehicle purchase, said this could possibly be a route to work with, with Joe to see some savings, and agreed. It's, there's no cost incurred by this board directly. They would work with it. It would just have them be part of the umbrella.
Yep. Mr. Yeah, I, I see, I think it's a, a really good deal. The only thing, my only notes on this, when I, I thought about this, is, is Clay County has a fleet policy. We just adopted this, or just updated our fleet policy. I don't know if, if they have a fleet policy or not. But if not, I would suggest and encourage that they do. And again, it goes to making sure that we, somebody doesn't end up doing something that might fall outside of the, I mean, we've experienced some, some issues in the past that actually made us tighten our policy.
Yeah.
And I, I guess I, you know, that goes to, maybe Paul knows.
Yeah. Commissioner Hamel, I, along with Steve, whoever, we'll follow up on that, but I'm drawing a blank as to who they use for that. But certainly, they have a, a policy that covers a number of, not only their auto, but their machinery. You know what I mean? That is in place. And I, I don't know off the top of my head who it is, but we'll, I think we can follow up on that and find out.
We have appropriate uses.
I think we're talking two separate policies. I think you're talking insurance policy, maybe, and you're talking policy in terms of what's an allowable use.
Right.
I do know that there is, but agreed, let's work together. And I, I know the Attorney's Office provides feedback frequently on those things, but making sure that, that that's ironed out is important.
My suggestion would be that, that maybe, that they would take a look at what our fleet policy is, and maybe they can take, take that into consideration for how they use their vehicles.
Yeah, just to clarify, too, we, both Kevin and I reached out to MCIT. We both have MCIT. We both have the same rep, and they looked into it to make sure that the coverages jive. So they're able to have coverage on that vehicle and not put us at liability, so.
I, I'm, I'm just referencing, trying to avoid a misuse of a vehicle
Yep.
by having appropriate policies in place.
And again, thank you, Joe, for your time spent with that group and, and, you know, I'll be reporting in just a minute, but on their last board meeting, just benefit they see, which certainly, if they're saving money, guess what? We're saving money on this end, too.
Yeah, exactly. Yep.
All right. Thank you.
You bet.
Mr. Chair, I would move the, that Clay County Soil and Water participate in the fleet management program under Clay County, and that Joe Olson, the director, be, be, sign the required amendment to master equity lease agreement.
Yep.
Second.
We got a motion, a second, that, that we approve Soil and Water participating in the fleet management. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay. Steve, request approval to sign amendment memorandum of understanding, not understanding, it means contract between the University of Minnesota and Clay County for providing extension programs locally and employee, and employing extension staff.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. If you recall back on October 22nd, Cecilia Amadu provided the extension update.
You said October, Thomas.
August, I said October. August 22nd, excuse me, provided an update on the extension budget. And during that time, there was a, I guess, question brought forward about making sure that we had the right resources and personnel in the right places. And in reviewing the contract, Section 9 of our current MOA allows for modification of the staffing with a 98-day notice. Part of the discussion was brought up that there are, there are two openings in extension. Part of the discussion was brought up that there are, there are two openings in extension, and the commission asked if they would be willing to expedite the changes to an MOA and waive the 90-day notice, which they did. Attached to the backside of your, your item is, would be the addendum. If you take a look at it, there's a shift in the extension educator agriculture, natural food, natural resource position to a .8, as was your request, with a price of $71,268 for 2024. And the other change was in the extension educator 4-H youth development, which was point, 1.8, which was now moved to two. So a total price of $161,296 for a total, total contract of $232,564 for 2024 for the 2.8 positions. With that, I'd yield for any questions.
Any question on the extension 4-H youth development? One point, or I'll go to two full-time. Does that include benefits and having that $161,000?
The benefits, if I might, I'm sorry, the benefits, they would then be employees of the university, and so those are included with the university's costs, not ours.
So the salaries for two people is $161,000?
$296.
So what they do, Mr. Chair, is they, they're, they, we aren't billed for individual people. The state of Minnesota, University of Minnesota, takes all of their employees, they put them into a pot, and they charge us the average for those employees. Across the whole state, not just within our, our contract.
Didn't we, if I can, didn't we drop the, the one position to .8 and the other one, and then we increased the extension to two?
Yes, so.
So why, why on, why on this does it show 2022, the .8? Because wouldn't?
Can I, yeah, I might. So this is, we're amending the contract from basically the action in August or signing the MOA today. We requested that amendment. So what it's showing in the first column is the 2022 price based on how the allocation for the, for the positions were. Now for the 2023, it says .8, but it, that's for the extension educator, the AFNR piece, and then it goes to 2.0 for the two extension educators.
Yeah, I, I guess that, that very top column is what I'm talking about. So the extension educator, the FTE, it showed $85,000 in 2022.
Right.
Wasn't that 1.0 and not .8?
1.0. Now, what we're amending is the 2023 price going forward at a .8. So it would be, you divide it out, you divide it out for the two months or two and a half months that it would be.
I see, okay. So the remaining, from the time this is established, the remaining contract for 2023 shifts from 1.0 to .8?
Correct.
We're not doing that effective January?
No.
We're doing it effective right now?
Yep.
Okay.
As soon as, in my understanding, based on a meeting that Commissioner Krabinoff and I had last week, is as soon as the dean of extension, dean of the university signs this, that's when the change will happen. Now, to further muddy the piece, is what we're billed is what the actual is. So that position is currently vacant, so we're not being billed by that. So the numbers will fluctuate a little bit here based on it, but what this is, is actuals if it was filled. Laurie, did I do an okay job trying to pitch that one?
I guess I just, I, to me, I just, I looked at that .8 as, you know, I looked at that at, at that time, I thought it was one, it is 1.0 as, as of right now.
Right.
It's going to change, and that's, okay. I think.
And then, and then, and if it goes to the money piece, that as Commissioner Mojo said, that position has been vacant for a few months now.
So we don't pay.
Right. So at this point, the charges are already decreased to us, like $6,500, and depending until that hire comes, again, there is no billing on, on our end. And we have, that search will be beginning for that position fairly soon.
Actually, both positions are empty.
Yeah, both positions.
The savings has doubled, what quoted.
Yeah. And just throw this out, whoever wants to answer. Once again, the program coordinator for the master gardener is Zirode. Who's going to do that? That program's really suffering.
Right, so that's confusing, basically, because what, so within the extension educator A and R position, they cover those components. Other communities have master gardener only, and that's where the program coordinator piece comes in. Now, because the person who had been in that position for as long as they had, it was not something that was added into the job responsibilities, which goes to your, your feedback on the complaint that there was a huge lack in that, right? The oversight of that piece. So as we had a meeting last week with the supervisor of this position, we said there's been a gap and that needs to be changed because that wasn't even included in the PDQ. So based on our local feedback, we are requiring an element and time spent in the PDQ on master gardeners.
That'll be identified.
Absolutely. And a job, job responsibility duties identified, and it wasn't in the prior.
Well, I'm just, on background, without belaboring it, if, if some attention and recruiting isn't done, we're probably not going to have a program in the next two or three years.
Right.
It's dying from neglect.
Our intent is certainly to elevate it.
And based on an educator versus a coordinator piece, there are different requirements in terms of educational components. And so by having an extension educator, it, it increases the requirement of education, but also work within the community as opposed to the program coordinator piece. If it was just horticulture and natural, or master gardeners, it would be very siloed on just those issues.
Okay.
That.
Extension educator position did oversee the master gardener program prior.
Correct.
So I, so it's not like we've taken money.
No, no, we're not taking, they did oversee it, but because it wasn't specifically identified in the PDQ of responsibilities, I shouldn't say PDQ, in the job responsibility duties, I think that's maybe, they did a lot of things, but what we're hearing is we want to make sure that component is added in.
Okay.
Any other questions?
Sure, I'm sure you may ask any questions. We haven't got a motion on it yet.
I'll move to amend the MOA contract between the U of M and Clay County for providing extension programs locally and employing extension staff.
Second.
We got a second. We got a motion, a second, to approve the contract or the amended contract. All in favor?
Aye.
Host.
Very good.
Okay, with that, we'll move on to request permission to set the 2024 preliminary levy for statute resolution 2023-19. Laurie, you going to help us with this one?
I'll just keep going.
I see.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair. As you mentioned before you this morning, for your consideration is resolution 2023-119, if approved this morning, it does two things. One, it allows Ms. Johnson to, the ability to certify the preliminary levy by state statute, meeting the, the September 30th deadline. It also sets the maximum amount of, that our citizens would be assessed in the upcoming budget cycle. It's important that, that our citizens recognize that once this preliminary levy is established, that it can only be reduced, adjusted, but not increased. Each year, our citizens have the opportunity to provide input on the overall budget during the truth and taxation session, which is going to be held December 12th at 6:00 PM. And this board always appreciates and encourages citizen involvement and feedback. As you recall, this budget started back at the end of, excuse me, back in May, with department heads getting their budget packets. Department heads had between three and four weeks to establish their proposed 2024 budgets and turn them in to Ms. Johnson. Ms. Johnson and I then met individually with each of the departments, reviewing line by line of their budgets and comparing them against previous years. After reviewing each of these budgets, they were presented before this commission and, and had the opportunity for their feedback. Through this process, the board has received multiple updates. We also had a work group session and certainly appreciate the board providing the direction, the guidance and, and insight that they have through this process that led us to today. And so this morning, again, this is a culmination of all the work that's happened over the last four months. If we take a look at our, our summary of the 2024 levy by fund, again, identifying the preliminary levy isn't adjusted much, so we'll look at the tax levy of, of $48,138,351. New requests of $271,082, which was reduced by your board action last week in utilizing public, public safety one-time dollars that were provided by the 2023 legislature for both the, the county attorney's office and also the sheriff's department. In addition, in addition to that, this, this includes steps in a 3% COLA for our employees. Includes a, we are fortunate to have an 8% insurance cap this year for health insurance. Last two years, we've seen significant increases had we not had the caps. Just as a reminder, we have one more year next year that we'll have a cap, and extremely important and fortunate to have that. I also recognize that we do have $250,000 in for future insurance needs in 2026, when we have to either RFP for services or look at self-insurance, we'll have some dollars because of those increases that we've, that we've seen. Based on our discussion last week, the board also utilized, looked to utilize $500,000 worth of fund balance to lower the levy. And so when you take into new construction consideration of 1.20% in the $500,000, we, we had a net levy, proposed net levy increase of 3.89%. And with that, I'd yield for any questions.
This week, talking to people at the AMC conference, you know, 3.89, of course, that's going to be an increase to the people in the county, but talking to some other county officers, and some of them are talking 20%, you know, and it's just amazing, I mean, their insurance costs went up 19%. So I think this, I think we're doing great with 3.89% when you're just looking at the increase in salaries and stuff like that, so. I think we all appreciate the work that you guys have done in getting it down to 3.89. I realize it's an increase, but this is the way life goes nowadays. I mean, it's just, there's almost more needs for the county and stuff. I think it's a pretty good budget that we're working on here. Nice to see 1%, so keep working at it. You've got a couple more months.
I have yet to see a preliminary levy changed at the end of the year. I say this every year.
Everybody's done their work, then.
Well.
Go ahead.
I have to concur with you in talking to other commissioners. This is reasonable. It's unfortunate. We can't keep it level or go down, but that's not a reality in, in face of the, the inflation and the costs that we've got to absorb like everywhere else. But I think it's, staff's done a good job of keeping, keeping this thing as, as level as they can.
If I can just ask you a question, Mr. Chair. So the $500,000 fund balance, I'm, I, I, I want to call it revenues over project, over expenditures from our previous year. We haven't got, what, we know for 2023 yet, so these are based on, comfortably speaking, what we had in revenues over expenditures for 2022, because we're that, we're behind, right?
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Campbell, that is correct.
And what, and what was our total revenues over expenditures for 2022?
Well, in our general revenues, we actually showed a deficit last year. And so we had, we had, our social services and our public health had revenues over expenditures, otherwise we remained fairly flat. If, if the board recalls, last year we utilized $1.35 million out of our, out of our fund balances, and so we anticipated.
From 2021?
2021, yes. And so we anticipated operating, operating in a, in a, I won't say a deficit, but it, didn't anticipate seeing growth in our general, general fund for last year.
But, so if I can, so the $48,138,351 before program, county program aid, is what we are expecting to need after we consider projected revenues and projected expenditures?
That's correct.
Okay. And the $44,632,484 was the same thing?
That's correct.
Okay.
Mr. Chair?
Go forward.
Thank you. I, I know a lot of municipalities and entities in our community are having these discussions right now. As you know, we have a requirement to set the preliminary by the end of the month. And, and the general, the common thread with all of these groups is, is we're in times where it costs a lot more to provide the services in which we need to for our communities. I know that our group and legislators worked really hard to continue to provide that county program aid that's legislatively appropriated. $5.5 million is a lot. But if you look at the increase in what it costs to provide the services, it doesn't necessarily reflect the same increase in which we saw in the county program aid. I appreciate the, the comments in regards to all of us understanding that it is a burden to pay taxes. We all understand that, and sometimes the burden is far more on other folks. And this board, I think, has always been really aware of that and try our best to provide services that meet the needs of the community, but also don't overly burden people. I think that you've done a great job working, both Laurie and you, Steve, working with our departments. As we plan, we're talking already with departments about what they're seeing the need will be for their departments over the next few years, and how we carefully apply that to what we ask our citizens to pay. We're in the process of two builds, building facilities that are meeting the needs of our community, our substance use facility and our detox facility, or, and our DMV facility. And I really appreciate the thought that has gone into those construction projects because we're not seeing a huge hit on the levy with those, understanding that there are programming needs and staffing needs that will come with that. But while I, I'm hopeful we can find areas for savings when other revenues come in. To see that number in the middle of what we're experiencing, while it may be high in some people's minds, because of the information that we know, I, I understand where it's coming from.
I, I don't want to at all question, and I think there's been a good job and a good effort done in terms of when you take into consideration the COLAs and everything else that, that we need to do to provide those services. We can't provide those, those services without good compensation for our employees and benefits. I, I guess, I, I, I'm not for one second questioning. I guess, I'm not for one second questioning where we're coming from in terms of what we've done to say what our potential needs are. What I'm going to be focusing on when it comes to December is similar to what I keep talking about, is we don't budget on an annual basis to put money in the bank. And if we do, we should be telling the people that that's part of what we're doing. But what we're doing is we're saying, these are the expenditures that we're going to need based on revenues over expenditures. And come December, I want to know, have a better idea of what is that going to look like for 2023? What did we ask the people to pay that may or not be used? And that shouldn't just go in the bank. Or we're just, unless we're specifically pointing out that our reserves are low and we need to have part of our levy to bring up those reserves. If that's the case, then we should be incorporating that into the plan. So that, so I'm going to, you know, I'm going to, that's been my focus all along. I don't quarrel with every department's, what their proposal is. But that's what they are, their proposals. So I'm going to go along with this, like I did with the HRA, but I'm going to have some heartburn in December if we don't change it, unless it shows that we're into a big deficit in 2023.
Well, I make a motion, our preliminary levy is set at 3.89.
Second.
And the motion is second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, commissioners, for all your direction and guidance during the process.
We'll continue on with our reports. Dave, you want to finish up your report?
Yeah. In respect to everybody's time here, I'll just summarize. The Public Safety Policy Committee put together some priorities that are going to be discussed for next year's legislative session, and that concludes my report.
Okay, Paul.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So our last meeting, September 12th, so that afternoon on Tuesday, Commissioner Mojo and I went to the Clay County Extension Educator Search with Extension Office, and we did an interview, had a very strong candidate, see where that goes. That's luck to the U of M. Then later that afternoon, I had the, was part of the Clay SWCD Board Meeting, monthly Board Meeting on that one. We reviewed what we, Joe had talked about with the vehicle leasing discussions about the implications of Minnesota leave laws to let the group here know that Soil and Water is going, looking for MDA through Department Ag, Minnesota Department Ag, Soil Health Financial Assistance Program for equipment, for mainly working with pollinators and grass seedings for buffers and other areas. And then also through the Department Agriculture, more money for noxious weeds and invasive plants, as being the inspector, Ag Inspector for Clay County to get additional money. We worked with One Watershed, One Plan with the watershed district. We were approved for a $25,000 grant for technical assistance, which is the first time they've asked for any, and we're successful. Want to make comment that River Keepers, who we work with with their Fall Water Festival, which works with a couple thousand kids, is going on from September 18th, 22nd, and then also 25th through the 27th, some of the outcomes. And then it was a special day for me. They recognized my 37 years of being on the board and gave me a nice plaque. We had a nice dinner, and it was appreciated. And I feel very fortunate, very fortunate as commissioner to still have on my committee list, being part of this organization, which, boy, when I look back, I was 32 years old when that started. So anyway, it's been a lifelong journey with Soil and Water, and it's nice to continue to stay with them.
I was three.
You were three. Yeah, well. Anyway, onward. The next day, on Wednesday, yeah, on Wednesday, then we had our quarterly meeting with Clay County Extension, the committee met. Again, we had a lot of things that are just going to be starting up again as the season wrapped up. Commissioner Mojo can tell them about all the events that were finishing up down at the state fair, but we had, we talked about 4H Youth Development. Rosie Gonzalez, who's part of our SNAP, excuse me, in education, has started a super shelf project. She got funds for that through the state, and that's all working with the food shelf over at Place for Hope. We had Sandy Knudsen, who speaks for the extension for the master gardeners. We had a very in-depth report from Sandy. And again, back to our conversation earlier, making sure we're keeping the focus on that group as part of the extension. And then Cecilia gave a report on Northwest Region events. They, we, it was Cecilia, when she was here, had brought forth her draft budget, and that was talked about at the meeting. And then the last piece of that was, we had a little follow-up on Clay County Fair, how we can improve things for next year and listen to feedback. And then another one, one last comment and a thank you. There is a, Jenny, can you help me with this? Been an anonymous group called London Farms, and they dedicate money each year to our budget. And they went forward, and they've been giving $10,000 each year, and they raised that to $15,000.
Oh, my gosh, that's huge.
We're very appreciative of what they're doing for 4H and the other things through extension. The next day, oh, yeah, was my, after that meeting, then I went over to the Fargo City Commission Chambers, and we had our Cascade Food Commission meeting quarterly. And just real quick on that, Food of the North has been a big piece of what food partners and along with the commission have been doing for the last eight years. They're going to be dissolving. They've been the main people that have brought forth. Started out just promoting the farmer's market downtown Fargo, and look how that's grown over the years. They were called Ugly Food of the North back then, but it was mainly about fruits and vegetables to a common marketplace. They'll be dissolving. Something will come up within their place. The steering committee will be working toward that to make sure that we're continuing education and getting information out of different places to take advantage of gardens or markets, whatever the case. Also, there being this time of the season, it's so important. Glean, I'm sorry, gleannd.com, people can go on there and look and find out opportunities. There is a group of 100 volunteers that are willing to go in people's backyards. If they want their apples picked, they'll pick them, and we'll give them out to the markets and vegetables in backyard. So let's not let it go to waste. There's people out there that'll pick it and bring it to people in need, so that's a good thing. Real quick, a little more on backyard. Beekeeping was presented as one of our blueprint documents. And then last, a couple of community recognitions, and I do want to talk about two of them because both those people who are here were talking about it. But the first one was the DGF, they were the recipient of a farm-to-school and early care full trade grant. And it was impressive to hear. So Shannon Hunts did the superintendent along with Shannon Noack, who was director of nutrition with DGF. They received a $71,000 grant, and they are taking food in from local farmers and actually then taking it, putting it in their cafeteria menus, and they're serving good nutritious food throughout their schools. And it's been interesting, as we talked about that, how the farmers got them excited, elevated about bringing produce in. So one more way, Shannon talked about this, to bridge that gap, especially for the rural community, paying taxes toward school districts, and here's a benefit and just a way they can work together. The last was a shout-out to Rory Beal from Public Health, who was with us a few minutes Rory was, is going to be inducted to the UND Hall of Fame in athletics. And so we recognized him for that honor in receiving that award. That'll be October 12th. I believe that's the game between NDSU and UND. And anyway, big thing for Rory. And Rory spoke how working with, in public health, working as a coach, doing all this thing, it just brought a greater connection to his life in working with young adults and that whole thing of health awareness and just good health and that awareness to that. So it was another benefit to his career. I, too, with the others here, went to the Fall Policy Conference in Ed Irwood there and Alexandria. Commissioner Eberinger gave a very good overview of the whole thing. I will, and his part in public safety. I was part of public health and human services. We two had about, well, it was a full eight hours, four hours each day on, as we all do, looking at what the, what legislature did for social services or, you know, human services and then public health. Two divisions now, they made that into law this year. But what those asked for last year, certainly there was a lot of money, one-time money in particular, that was brought toward public health and social services, working toward mental health, working toward homelessness, you know, and other supports that are needed throughout our state. The second day was with that, those parts being accomplished in 2023, what's our agenda going to look like in 2024? And man, you get a room full of people with all the issues within the social services and public health, and it gets really big. But at some point, we had to hone that in, so we really spent time vetting, you know, looking at what we were hearing out there or need to be elevated that were misses and bring those forward and really bring it down to one or two, three at the most priorities. And the one that was, being newer, you know, was, that really rose to the top, was about the computer system, the systems modernization that's needed in health and human resources. And it's so, it's so out of date. We're spending a lot of time, staff time, reporting where we could have caseworkers instead out doing the job. So I think it's going to be a real push to see if we can get a new system, to start modernizing something, what that software looks like. We'll have to work directly with DHS on that. And then, and it was kind of brought up by you, Commissioner Campbell, workforce, as you talked to Sarah. You know, everything threads through workforce, and mental health is directly correlated to all that, too. So when we talked to county government, one of the things we talked about was, how does county government start advocating for itself in the school systems to create a workforce for the county? And those jobs that occur in social work and in public health. How do we create a system and get that in the heads of younger kids and saying, yeah, that'd be good, I like that, let's move toward that? So I think there's going to be a push to see what we can do, just the same as trades and other areas do it, you know, a real push to hit to those kids, especially in late elementary and middle school, that, you know, there is great careers within county government. With that, that should be everything. Thank you.
Jenny?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Last week, as discussed earlier, I had the meeting with the University of Minnesota Extension. We did have that interview for the county position, hopeful that something can be worked out there. Big component to filling that is what the action of today was, making sure that the signature was on for the full-time for that piece. More discussion is happening in regards to the ARG piece and having the feedback that we heard from different master gardeners in that, I think is really important. So thank you for that. And then I didn't attend the conference, but I think I wanted to just talk to you a little bit about what the priorities continue to be, issues that raised kind of heck in 2022 that I think are ripe for our action in 2023, which would be the continuation of the discussion in regards to the SCORE grants and the solid waste management tax. That really does have an effect on Clay County's budget and is very, very important for us. The 404 assumption, the public waters inventory regulatory processes and that, that is a huge hot-button item with most of our environmental groups and watersheds and of the nature of that. And then the use of proceeds from sales of tax-forfeited lands, as you recall, I'm serving on that tax forfeiture work group, but really need some guidance from the state on how best we can utilize that. Talking about fully funding the local road wetland replacement program is incredibly important, and then the legacy funding bill. And then the one that is also enormous is talking about how counties deal with PFAS and the costs that they will incur, not only to the environment, but the financial implications in dealing with them. Yesterday, I attended the PIC committee meeting that was, I don't know if reported on yet, sorry, you haven't reported on that?
I'm not on the PIC meeting.
Oh, you, okay, sorry.
You and me there.
Okay, yesterday, we had a long discussion on the PIC committee meeting, a further discussion, a continuation for, with the sheriff's department on public safety funds. There are a number of items will be kicked back to the public safety group for their feedback on that, tweaking some components that we had in work group before it comes to the board in a week. And then some suggestions on some of the items that the sheriff had asked for utilizing those funds for. So that will come to the boards in which, or the committees in which it needs to. We had a discussion, public health, regards to the education, educational requirements on some of the open positions. This board has seen that there are some positions that have been open for a really long time, and the stress of that on departments and the employees that work in them. So how can we get creative in what the requirements are to maybe get some additional applicants in and get those filled? So Kathy will be coming forward with that piece. And we also had the same discussion, as many of you know, our county engineer, assistant county engineer position has been open for a long time, and how do we maybe address what that requirement is so that we can get more into the interview process? Certainly, there will be a board action that needs to happen from this board, but also you'll vet them through an interview process as well. but also you'll vet them through an interview process as well. But in a tough workforce time, how we get creative to fill positions is important. And I, as noted, I did chaperone a group of kids from Clay County, did the state 4-H horse show, and I've said this a number of times, but Clay County has amazing young people, and we can be really proud that they represent us on the state level and national level. I know we're sending a team of young kiddos to the national level for competitions, so that's great. Congratulations to them. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. On September 12th, we had our Highway Tracking Committee meeting, and we had a little bit of discussion. Again, the MINDOT has a building in Holly that they're looking at trying to find a new owner for. At one point in time, the city of Holly had expressed some interest in that. They no longer do, so we're looking at long-range, what benefit, if any, there would be to Clay County considering that property. We did also talk about the assistant engineer position and maybe changing some of the criteria. I think we made some recommendations that I'm assuming went to PIC yesterday for consideration. So I'm assuming something's going to be coming forward to help in that regard. We got construction updates on CASA 18, that paving project was completed, and there was just topsoil and gravel remaining to be done. And at that particular time, CASA 26 was currently being paved, and it had its first lift was completed. And the annual re-graveling of our county roads has been completed for the year. We did receive information that regarding the North Broadway Bridge, that the Houston Engineering is working on alignments on low-bridge alternatives. And there's going to be a presentation to the Fargo City Commission on October 16th. And obviously, I think from our standpoint, the low bridge is probably the only one that we seem, feel would be economically feasible to do. I'll just move on. Also, on the 12th, then we had a diversion authority planning meeting, and the primary topic of conversation was the recreational feasibility study update, looking at, and what we're finding out is that there really are no funds planned out within the current process for anything recreational. And for example, the sales tax that's on the North Dakota side, Cass County and Fargo sales taxes, none of them even give that as an option that they can spend the money on. So although the recreation is a huge component and probably very worthwhile in doing, there has to be, I think the goal is to have a different entity take that over. There's going to be a proposal of a group of people that will form that committee. We will know more about that. There's, I think, I suggested that we have a lunch and learn, that Commissioner Eberinger, you've been involved in some of those, where we learn more about that. And so more to come on that in terms of the future. We talked a little bit about an RFQ for property demolition. As we move forward, there's a lot of property that we're acquiring now that may or may not need to be demolished. A big item now is the diversion inlet structure is complete, and it's going to be turned over to the diversion authority. And so we need to make sure that we have our operations and maintenance on that particular item, because that turns over to us, and that's our responsibility, which is outside of the P3, because that's, that was an agreement with the Corps of Engineers. And with that being said, there's going to be a diversion inlet structure celebration, and I think it's planned for October 27th, but there will be more information to come on that. And sometimes those have a tendency to sometimes change, so, but there's, right now, that was the plan. On the 15th, we did have a special meeting of the Triple RDC Board of Authority, that's the dispatch, and we just had one item on the agenda, and that was the land lease for the facility. And we did agree to approve that 50-year lease. There's some language in there that talks about what to do 40 years down the road if something needs to be done, and potential acquisition from the city by the Triple RDC Board. So that was approved, and so that lease is in place for the next 50 years at $1 a year on the land.
I just want to make
Did you feel mentioned? I was on the phone.
Yeah.
Coming back.
Yeah.
Alexandria.
Great. Okay. And then I also attended the Association of Minnesota Counties. I won't get too much more into it, other than the fact that I really appreciated the time that they spent on 911 dispatcher needs. I think that was really important, and I was glad to see on this item that came up, if you did scan that, that they did include the Triple RDC within all of their promotions for people who might be looking for work in that area. So thank you for that. Then we, in terms of transportation, you know, I think we really went over, there was a good report by Eric Rudin on new transportation funding. More of that will come, you'll learn more of that. And there was significant conversation about electronic vehicles and charging stations, and what MINDOT is planning to do based on the federal, on where they're going to put them. And I think the focus is going to be on the I-94 corridor, and I think the Interstate 35 corridor is going to be where they're going to really be starting their focus on that. Yesterday, we attended, Commissioner Gross and I attended, the West Central Regional Water District meeting, pretty, some pretty significant conversations going forward on that. And, you know, and it basically is the structure, and it's anticipated that, you know, I know originally, when we were first brought in this, we had just those northern counties of Clay County involved. And I think there was estimated, Steve, if I'm not mistaken, around $40,000 would be a cost share based on those counties involved. So the overall cost that they're anticipating this to be, to take it through the district court process is $300,000 between attorneys and engineers' fees. And so based on the changes that we provided and the other counties provided in terms of percentages, Hope County's percentage went to 45%, Clay County's went to 39%, and Norman County's went to 16%. So of that $300,000 total estimated cost, and that's going to be over a period of 18 months or longer. It's not like it's going to all happen at once. But the Clay County share of that is anticipated to be $117,000 to go through this process. As you recall, we put in, we reserved some of those special ARPA funds to the tune of $100,000 to go towards that. So we, you know, in the course of 18 months to 24 months, we might be a little bit short of what we've already reserved. But the good news is, is it's, you know, the anticipated cost is fairly close to that number that we did. So we did, there is going to be, so there's a long process, and because of the need to have a fiscal host or fiscal agent, it was agreed upon that Norman County will handle that. But there needs to be the mechanism in place for when the bills come in, who pays them, and then how they go about getting reimbursement from the other two counties. And so Norman County, at their board meeting today, through the assistance of their administrator and engineer, they're going to be drafting a MOU that would basically outline how this $300,000 will be split up and when it would be done. And, you know, so we asked them to do that. If at all possible, we could see that MOU coming before us to act on next week. And that's just to keep this ball rolling in terms of, and there was an awful lot of other discussion. We spent two hours talking about other things on that, and I'm not going to get into the weeds on those today, but there's an awful lot of things. I know there's issues that I have concerns with in the language, and I had asked that Mike, you and Brian, or both of you, and Steve, and Frank and I maybe can meet and go over some of those things before we, to give that presentation, because there's a lot to it. And there's a lot of commitment on the part of the counties. And so we want to make sure that our concerns are addressed in whatever final document is done. So there's a lot of, a lot riding on researching and doing this right. So, Mr. Chair, that concludes my report.
Yeah. Yeah. I, too, was at the Highway Tracking meeting, which Commissioner Campbell reported very good on. That was on Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, and Friday. Wednesday, at the AMC meeting, I went to the Minnesota Rural Caucus meeting. And there, some of the talk was on cannabis. Some of the people are, counties are establishing ordinance on cannabis. I don't think we've done that yet. I don't know if we need to. It's probably up to the cities to what they want to do, but some of the counties are establishing a cannabis ordinance. And I don't know whether we're going to be at that or not, get there or not. Rob Cuback and Senator Jordan Rasmussen from Fergus Falls was at our meeting in Nigga. I always thought that Paul Markwood and Ken Eakin were very good in their figures and stuff, but these two guys are very knowledgeable in what they're talking about, too. It was good to see what they had to present and what they were talking about. And Jordan Rasmussen was talking about, you know, helping out nursing homes, pensions, paid family leave. And he was also talking about permitting rule, permits, getting permits from the state. It's taken a little bit long to get those permits through, so he's trying to work on The information we talked about in general government was election update, went through some of the things that we have to be done. I think it looks that we're going to have to open up more election dates going to be involved in the future. I'm sure Shannon will get a hold of that. Some of the other things we went through was para, the talk they gave, I think was probably to the wrong group there or something like that. It was probably way above my line, but gave a lot of good information, but I think the wrong people were there to hear it. So it's, but it's good information they gave on our para. Let's see. Also, Monday morning, yesterday morning, we were at the water district that Kevin has talked about. Oh, excuse me, one thing from the AMC. A lot of people were talking about these grants that are getting. Makes me wonder more and more, do we need a grant position? I know each department probably gets their own grants. Do we need someone to make sure that all the grants that are available, that we are available for? Sometimes those grants can pay for their own position, you know, by giving 10% of the grant to the person getting them or something like that, you know, whatever. But I don't know, is that something we should look at or not to get a grant writer into the county? But, excuse me, back to the water district. You know, as concerned with that $117,000, we're probably not going to see any benefit from it, but we are, because Felton and Georgetown, I think they're, yeah, that's the only two that are really looking at it right now. They've already got a, Felton's already got $1.75 million grant to help them out, you know. So we are going to be involved in that water district almost right away. But how fast that water is going to go come down from climax? Do they have one crossing already? Are they going to put in another crossing in the Red River? Don't know that yet. It all depends how many people want to sign up. But I gave Steve and Brian a copy of this thing, so that's something we'll have to go over, that contract. And yesterday afternoon, we had the PIC meeting, which Jenny pretty much covered. So those are my meetings, Steve.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Last Tuesday, I participated in Highway Tracking, which has been covered. On the 13th, we had county management, we had the budget discussions, we had insurance updates. Again, open enrollment is going to be October 19th to November 3rd. I think the important thing for our employees this year is that at different times, there's a deadline that had some flexibility to it. The challenge is, is a lot of times, we would have, going in the last couple of days, we'd have 150 to 200 people that still had not turned in their information to HR. This year, it's going to be full electronic, and when the date comes, if you have not turned your information in, you'll take on the same plans as you did the previous year automatically. So it'll be encouraging to do that, and we'll have some rollout coming out on how to fill out the HR paperwork electronically. On 13th, we also did some board prep with the understanding that we were going to be going to the AMC Policy Conference. I also had a number of conversations with Rocky Schneider from AD2S in regards to the rural water district discussion. And again, you did confirm that Georgetown has signed on as to be part of the plan, the city of Georgetown. Participated in the AMC Policy Conference, again, that has been covered. I participated in the general government. I do think we did have a hearing, and maybe I stepped out, we did hear information from NACO on Medicaid, and being able to maintain that Medicaid during incarceration for both our youth and our juvenile, and a plan bringing forward at least a portion of that time. Met with Mr., talked with Mr. Milton while I was gone on a series of county issues. Also, during general government, we talked about the local tax advisory task force. This past legislative session, there was some discussion of eliminating or limiting the use of sales tax for projects. And so this task force is looking into how those sales tax are being utilized to bring that information to the legislature. Participated in the water district discussion that was addressed by Commissioner Gross, Commissioner Campbell. Again, a very interesting discussion, lots of information that will be coming forward to this board. Participated in the PIC meeting yesterday, that's been addressed. Also, just a few things. Again, I'm working with Dar Lee. If the board's wishes are to have both a fall and spring meeting, joint board meeting. And so we're looking at what the best time for that is, that we'll be bringing forward to you as a commission. Also, we are going to be having the rural cities, counties meeting in Holly on October 19th at 4:00 p.m. So if you have any agenda items that you'd like on that list, please let me know. We have, last week, at our county assessor position opened up, and from an interview standpoint, we've started to get the applications. And so as we move forward, I guess I'd just be looking for some direction from this board and how they'd like to handle those interviews. Generally, you've gone from having a couple, you know, one commissioner on a department head level to you, to your entire group interviewing. And so looking for your insight on how you'd like to move forward with the interview process.
Here's one further thing I also noticed on the AMC, they had a thing on tax forfeiture. I mean, I don't know if we're going to get involved in that or not, but they're talking about going back a long ways to try and collect some of those things. If you sold, you know, took over some tax-forfeited property, if you made a profit on selling that, you're going to owe that money back to the
Mr. Chair, Commissioners, we've had some discussions already with the county attorney's office and also Ms. Johnson and the assessor's office.
All right. Any else?
Well, I think probably some feedback on that. I know with different department head interviews, we've typically had two commissioners part of that process, correct? Is that what we've done?
Yeah, I think on some of them, that's been the case. You know, I think if you get into the larger departments, I think we've, in those particular instances, we've had the full board. An example would be social services director, public health director. Some of the smaller departments, I think it's fine, but I think when it gets to those larger ones, it's probably good to have all of us involved.
Okay.
If you're interested in that, let Steve know.
Mike, do you have anything?
Nothing, Mr. Chair. Thank you.
Jackie?
Thank you.
We're adjourned.